Hey, I think we are live. This is Ryan of Happy Healthy Vegan and also as the title of this livestream entails a or implies a candidate for city council in Long Beach. And it's about 6:38 PM Pacific Standard Time here in Southern California. So if you're watching live, welcome and I will leave this stream up later on in case you can't join us, just click the link. You probably got a notification or something, you saw this somehow, so yeah, just click the link and you can still watch us for a while. In fact, I really don't take these streams down, I just make them unlisted, which means you can't see them from our homepage on YouTube, but as long as you have the link, you can watch it for pretty much any time. So hey, what's up? We already got Tracy the moderator on, good to see you there Tracy. Evelina Produce Not Pills, Kirsten Slater, Michael, I think I just got my notification now too for this livestream, let's see, yep, there it is, now live on YouTube, awesome. Yeah, your first comment there too, Michael, quick draw, 69 Camaro, what is up guys? We'll give people a second to respond to the notifications. Yeah, I haven't done a lot of livestreams lately, this campaign has been keeping me busy, much busier than I thought, like, you know, I thought I'd be able to balance it all easier, but you know. So anyway, I'm glad to be back, I just filmed a video today here for YouTube, it'll be out tomorrow, it's back to vegan stuff, not, you know, not another Long Beach corruption political video, unless I, story breaks overnight, but I have one all set to go for you guys tomorrow. Anyway, let's see who else is on now, let's see, we got Roots Like A Tree, Sugar Plum, did you already come on yet? Hey, what's up Sugar Plum? You like my new title? Awesome. Hey Evelina, this is Major Night Michael, awesome, cool, I'm glad to make you guys night here. Nikia and Garrett and Super Black Mamba, Lucretia, Anas Dime, they might pronounce your name there from Greece, cool, awesome, wow, international following, just like that. Hey Lisa from happiest vegan on earth, just seeing your name makes me hungry for like Disneyland vegan food, Lisa, it's bad. You're on the Toy Story Bus right now. Toy Story Bus? What's the Toy Story Bus? Is that like, just like a bus that goes around California Adventure Park? I don't know, I guess there's tons of stuff there, I still haven't seen. Hey, what's up Wayward Winchester, how's it going there? I haven't seen you, I guess since my last livestream. Wheat is the topic this evening, what do you mean there? Tops8541 and Mecca Rocks and let's see. Let me change one setting here, so I could see your comments a little better. Let's see. Alright, sorry, resizing some windows here. Let's see, what does say on my shirt? Yeah, it's kinda hard to read huh? Sorry for what I said when I was under, undercarved. It's an old shirt I got from Sweet and Simple Vegan. See it there? Yeah, anyway. Let's see, let's see, the bus to the Toy Story parking lot? Oh, I didn't know that was one of the parking lots, really? Huh, I guess I just know like the ones I go to, the one in downtown Disney, maybe that's the name of that one, I have no idea. Hey Hardly Ten Man Adonis, good to see you, old friend, and thanks so much, you are our first super chat tip, less than four minutes in, you were the first one, thank you so much Hardly Ten Man Adonis, I just love saying your name, just like rolls off the tongue, so cool. And where is he, asking about the, Jerry's, about the Kobe tribute, yeah, I definitely watched the Kobe tribute on Monday, yeah, yeah, it was quite, quite a tribute, yeah, it was everything, you know, you could ask for, so yeah, Vanessa Bryant having the, the, just the ability, the courage, the bravery to go up and speak about her late husband and daughter, just, yeah, it got us, Angie and I both watched it and yeah, we, we were in tears for quite a large proportion of it, yeah. Anyone else watch that tribute? Just joining Inspired By, you only missed four minutes and 33 seconds, so you are in early here. Let's see, Plant Based Mom, will we ever go to East LA? I haven't been to East LA in quite a long time, our friend Irvin, who has Vegan by Victoria Bakery, he is in the process of opening up his own bakery there, like he had it like in his parent shop before, but now he's gonna go off on his own, so yeah, we will hopefully be, be visiting East LA a lot more in the not-too-distant future. Hey Rob, thanks so much man, what'd you say there? Hope I can win in the future, we need a less corrupt system, yeah, this is, chances of me winning this race, honestly guys, once I've seen how much money's been pumped into it and everything, and then plus, not just that, I can see, this is my first time, I'm a noob, I didn't have the mayor right there helping me, giving me money, giving me advice, telling me how to set things up, making teams for me, I see what I need to do next time if I ever were to do it, and if I ever were to do it again, I would start planning it out way ahead of time, build more teams and, and I just, you need, you need more people, I thought I could do it pretty much all on my own, cause I'm kinda used to working that way, you know, make YouTube videos, just me and Angie, and you know, make music on our own, we don't really need other people, I'm kinda used to working that way and that doesn't work that well in running a political race, I need to be better at team building. So yeah, I learned a lot and like I said, next time I know exactly what needs to be done to, to, just like totally, like kick ass, you know? It's like I haven't been kicking ass as much as I could have, but it's my first time. So I'm not done running yet, no, the elections in about five days I guess it is, or seven days, six days, March 3rd, Super Tuesday next week. Let's see, let me get some more water here, my throat's still not 100%, getting back to normal, you know how it is when you get a cold, like after a while, like you don't feel bad anymore, that's the least I feel right now, I feel fine, just waiting for these dumb lingering symptoms to finally just flush out or do whatever, you know, just go away. James, am I going to Indian Wells next month? Great question James, yeah, actually, I really, I plan to, I've missed the past like maybe four or five years or so, I used to go like every year and watch, so one of my favorites to do is go like before the big opening weekend, that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I like to go the Thursday right before that, because there's still like, you know, first round matches and all the courts, there's, there's matches going on, even if you've ever been in tennis tournament, the final weekend, it's dead, there's only like one or two matches going on, but you go at the beginning, it's crazy, all the practice courts, like all the players are there and they have to practice, so you see like, you know, top 10 players, top 20 players out practicing on the practice courts and all of the early round matches are fun, just such a beautiful location to go see tennis, so that's, I think that's our plan, as long as the weather's good and we're healthy, go on that opening Thursday for Indian Wells Tennis, yeah, it's really cool, I'm just bummed that Federer won't be there this, this year, he had some knee surgery and he's gonna have to miss it, which sucks. But anyway, yeah, cool. Let's see what else you guys talking about there? Produce Not Pills, yeah, I'm basically done, yeah, March 3rd's right around the corner, I'm in the home stretch right now, you know, there's not too much more that needs to be done, I've pretty much done all my campaigning, I guess I can go keep knocking on doors, but you know, YouTube videos still need to get made, you know, livestreams need to happen, cause I love doing that, that's the thing, I don't wanna give this stuff up in any way, so it's hard to find a good balance between everything. Let's see, what else y'all talking about here? Let's see, um. Let's see, um. Let me check some stuff out here. Okay, thanks Virginia, I see some of your messages have been deleted, I don't need to paste a bunch of times here, but yeah, if you are not of my political liking, but still support me, cause I really don't think, I'm kinda like Andrew Yang, you know, it's like Andrew Yang didn't fully, really consider himself left or center or right, just like moving forward, I just have ideas, I think, that move the city and the planet forward, you know, I don't think there's anything liberal versus conservative about trying to save the planet from the existential crisis that faces us, I think we all should be on board with that regardless of your race, religion, political persuasion, or anything like that, we all have a vested interest in this, I don't know how that's become politicized, how, you know, it's like one party's become kinda politically the norm to deny climate change and the other, than the other party's become, you know, it's, don't deny science, I don't know how that's happened, it's really, I mean, I can see how it's happened, I see how special interests has influenced thinking. But yeah, it shouldn't be polit, I don't see myself as anything other than acting in the best interest of all of us. You know, that's liberal, whatever, that's center, that's whatever, it's just to me, common friggin sense, you know, we need a planet to live on, I mean, how can anyone disagree with that, you know, how can, how is that up to debate, like, oh no, we can go live on the moon or something like that, yeah? How do you deny climate change? Oh, it's really easy, I mean, I debate climate change deniers all the time, there's several, many ways they, it's denied, one is just to deny that it even exists in any way, shape or form, like they'll show some like, like some conspiracy theory maps of weather that show things are warming up or cooling, whatever, they'll just find something that runs contrary, or they'll say, okay, it's changing, but there's no way to prove that humans are causing it, when there's no other really been any major change in the variables that affect our planet other than human activity, so yeah, it, it gets denied all the time. Again, not trying to politicize, I'm just trying to say it's a scientific fact, you know, it's, it's, it's beyond dispute, in fact, right now, I mean, cities and nations already preparing for the effects of climate change, call it what you want, but they're already preparing for sea level rise, why are sea levels rising right now? Because the ocean is warming, melting glaciers and, and sea levels rising, I mean, it's, it's already happening. You know, I mean, it's already happening and mitigation plans are already being made, yep, yeah, a lot of people, including our president, deny climate change. Yeah, nobody wins, I agree with you, only people that win are in the short term, the people that profit, the reason why climate change is, is denied is because there's misinformation, it's like with, it's like the anti vegans, like the meat and dairy industry put out misinformation that people believe, same thing, the fossil fuel companies and others that pollute our planet and profit off the continued polluting of our planet, put out misinformation out there, they're kinda like doing the same thing, the meat and dairy industry, the tobacco industry have been doing, just put some doubt out there, they don't have to prove that climate change isn't happening, you just have to make people think, oh, maybe, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, I don't know, I don't care anymore. Alright, so anyway, um. Oh man, Wild Kutch has got a wisdom tooth pulled out, hey, did you ever see my video about my wisdom tooth extraction video? I mean, I tried to film as much as I could in the doctor's chair there, wait, who's that, no, Angie's the one that got a wisdom tooth out, my bad, that was really gnarly, I, I had a molar taken out, which is really bad too, but yeah, wisdom teeth looks like, you know, 10 times worse. So hope you're feeling better and hopefully you're on some good, some good drugs of some kind right now and, and this podcast, this livestream's a little, even a little more entertaining. Alright, so what else y'all talking about? Yeah, jeez Louise, yeah, if humans aren't causing climate change, what is it then? Magic? No, they'll say, well, we don't know, it could be volcanoes, it could be sunspots, but then if you just look at the scientific data, cause people just pull stuff out of their butt, you see me do this all the time, debunking anti vegans, those pull stuff out of their butts, but if you look at the science, no, there's nothing special about this sunspot activity cycle right now that's causing the Earth to warm, there's nothing about any other astronomical cycle, cause there are astronomical cycles that do cause climate change, like say that Earth's rotation tilt, if it's aimed a little bit more off axis, it gets cooler, if it's more on axis to the sun, it warms up, and this little time, it's like a maybe a one degree change in tilt throughout this long cycle, that changes things, but we're not in that right now, yeah, there are astronomical phenomena that affect climate change, but none of those are, are happening right now. Who, someone just bought, Anthony, if you're watching, someone just bought the ebook of Keep It Car Baby off our web store, I actually, um, let's see, I'm really lazy, I haven't changed this since Veganuary, here's our web store and we still have, I'm sorry, I still, I've still have the ebook here for $6.50, which is half price, and I've just been so busy with the campaign, I haven't made an effort to, to raise the price back up, so if you are interested in getting it still, taking advantage of my, I just put the link there of my just busyness and slowness, go for it, get it there, just put the link there, yeah, was it Anthony, I just got a copy of it there, yeah, Anthony, if you're watching, thank you. Let's see, um. Yeah, I don't know anything about the, any facts, I can just speculate with you guys about coronavirus, I mean, China has, as I showed in my video, has had a history of human animal interaction, living in close quarters where viruses could be transmitted from a non-human species eventually over to human species, they have that history, it's just so coincidental that they have some kinda bio weapons or bio lab in Wuhan as well, so I don't know, I really don't know what to say about that, all I can say is, it's a really fascinating development, what's going on with that. Nikia, you gotta get the ebook now before I get off my butt next week after the campaign is done and raise the price back up, you know, it's half price, the ebook Keep It Car is still half price from Veganuary's price, cause I've just been so busy, just had, you know, and, you know, you gotta like juggle things and that one always is the back burner, like go in on the store and change the price back. Yeah, Tracy's right, we have a little more than a dozen, maybe I would say 20-ish copies of Keep It Car Baby, you know, the, the print book of, of Keep It Car Babies, yeah, we're getting low on these two and it's really expensive to make another pressing, I gotta get in touch with our friend, the vegan printer, to make another pressing, but it involves, you know, getting a few thousand bucks together and all that, so it's gonna have to be done though. Centari, thank you for your super chat tip there, much appreciate, I think you're the third one of the evening here, so thanks so much, check out your question, how much do I think the vegan movement will spread in the next 10 years? Great, great question, it really depends on how you define the vegan movement, I mean, the whole consciousness of plant-based eating is spreading like wildfire, it's like, you know, it is the fastest growing segment in the food industry, it's double-digit growth and it could, does that year after year, and you know, is everyone that is into that vegan? Obviously not, but I just wanna see more of that, because really the bottom line is, yeah, the more people that are eating plants, that means the fewer animals that are getting, that are getting eaten or killed for whatever reasons, you know, if people don't have ethical moral reasons, you know, that's fine, as long as the animals aren't getting killed, I'm cool with that, and it's less environmental destruction, which is huge for me, you know, trying to save the planet, you know, trying to increase awareness of the, the role of animal agriculture, you always hear about, you know, fossil fuels, which are huge, but animal agriculture actually, once you total it all up, it's 15% of greenhouse gas emissions worldwide greater than transportation, so people need to get on board and whatever it takes, so it is growing, by what rate, at what point will we hit a certain percentage? I don't know, but it's not slowing down at all. Yeah, Tracy, I saw that, yeah, like everyone's trying to get in competition with Beyond Meat and Impossible to make their own plant-based burgers, and some are gonna be more successful than others, I kinda like how Ethan Brown of, of Beyond Meat put it, he kinda likened his company to Tesla, saying, yeah, everyone else is trying to compete with Tesla and make their own, you know, luxury or non-luxury electric vehicles, but now they have such an advantage, a technological advantage, having done this longer, economies of scale, better software, everyone else is coming out with a first generation, anything, a battery, a, a computer, like the user interface, all that and so forth, but anyway, I'm getting as, I think he might be right that Beyond Meat has a certain technological advantage, having been doing this for years, you know, all these Johnny come lately's coming to market, but you know, you guys know, we've been following this for a while, we've known about, you know, Beyond Meat for, for many years. Why did I go vegan? Great question Sean, I've always been of the belief that if I don't need to consume animals, if animals don't need to die for me to live, I'm on board with that philosophy, because like most people, most people like animals, we don't like to see them harmed, we don't like to see them killed, so you know, I'm consistent with that belief, I don't look at like one animal, like a dog or cat and see, oh, yeah, they deserve to live and go to the vet and be treated well, but I don't, I don't look out in the field of cows and go, oh, but those are for eating, I see them equally as, you know, lovable, valuable forms of life, just like any pets are, so anyway, that's why I went, I tried going vegetarian when I was younger, living at home, and that lasted for a little while, but I was living with my, with my mom and dad and it didn't work out that well, but finally, yeah, Angie and I were pretty plant-based, cause she's been vegetarian since the 80s, 2010, I just drew line in the sand, I'm going vegan now, I'm not stopping, I'm not looking back, there's no excuse, it's gotten so much easier and it's, it gets easier every year, there's more and more foods, more and more restaurants have vegan foods, you know, just there's no excuse now, 2020, if you're, you know, there's no reason not to be vegan unless you just don't give a crap about the planet and animals, and that's, you know, I'm not saying that's bad, it kinda is, but that's the attitude I detect for most people who don't wanna go vegan, they just don't care about that. So I'm trying to raise awareness about that, I'm not saying someone is bad, I used to not care about that stuff either, you know, I didn't think I was a bad person when I didn't care about vegan morals, but I'm just trying to raise awareness, most people in their daily lives don't think about the things that, that make veganism so, such a, you know, so important to us. I saw a question about our t-shirts, are we out of 2XL shirts still? Jerry's, whatever it says on our web store right now is accurate, we might have a 2XL in, you know, I think, I think we're all out of 2XL shirts right now, but I've been a bad t-shirt merchant for the past month or two or three because of the, the campaign and everything, and I need to make orders for new t-shirts, I know we're either out of sizes and styles or really close to being out, so I'll make an order in the next week or so, so yeah, check back with me on the next livestream, see how that's going, but yeah, odds are, yeah, couple weeks we'll have a, a new selection of shirts and with all our sizes back, and I like to keep a few double XLs and the tie-dyes and those black t-shirts. Let's see, what else y'all talking about? Yeah, we should, I think, I believe we have XLs in all those shirts right now on our store, so yeah, let me again, post a link to our store here. Copy and paste. Let me tell you this though, if you're looking for the biggest shirt, the roomiest shirt is this one, actually, let me put the, is this one, the long sleeve, what do we call it, the Happy Healthy Vegan Long Sleeve Tee, this one is roomy, I swear. A large is like an extra large and an extra large is like a double XL, it's a really big roomy tee, so if we have some more of these in stock, let me look right now, aha, extra large, yeah, this is what I would recommend Jerry's for sure, get an extra large in this shirt here, let me link to it here, but yeah, it's a really roomy tee, so I would suggest getting an XL of this and this should, yeah, fit like a 2XL for you, this is what you need there Jerry's, I'm glad I remembered that fact about it, cause yeah, mediums look good on me, the large looks like a nightgown almost on me. Let's see, um. Let's see, what are you asking Hardly, is that a paperback I just bought? Ryan, did you just buy something? Let's see, I didn't see any orders coming right now, I saw one, unless you're Anthony and Anthony bought a, it looked like Anthony bought some, bought a, looks like Anthony bought a, as I call it, the ebook of Keep It Car Baby, so if that's you Hardly Ten Man Adonis, let me know, we can, you can just buy the, buy the hard copy of Keep It Car Baby and we'll just, I'll just delete and refund your ebook, I'll see if it, I get the same name, let me know if that was you, you know, just buy this one and like I said, I'll refund the ebook for you, you know? You're Anthony, okay, let me just take a quick look here, what I got here. Oh Anthony, wait, yeah Anthony, you are Anthony, okay, alright, yeah, it looks like, yeah, you bought the ebook, Hardly Ten Man Adonis, so yeah, let me know what you want me to do, if you want me to refund the ebook, if you buy the, the print book, let me know, it's all, it's all good, that refunds are pretty easy to do, it takes a few days for all the money to get transferred back, but yeah. Let's see. Produce Not Pills, will someone's big guns fit in the long sleeve shirts? You're laughing, but yes, they're really spacey shirts, if you have big guns, if that's you, it'll fit. Okay, it looks like Jerry's may have bought the, well, I just got another order there from Jerry, so we'll see what you got there, it sounds like you probably got one of the shirts there. Hey Johnny, thanks, thanks for the, the super chat tip there, thank you so much Johnny. What is a ebook? Oh Hardly Ten Man Adonis, ebook is the, you know, the electronic book, the, you know, the downloadable PDF version of Keep It Car Baby, so like I said, if you're looking for the printed book rather than the electronic book, let me know and I'll refund the $6.50 for the ebook, so let me know. I hear some walking.
Yeah, I'm kinda excited.
Oh Angie's here, look, check it out guys, Angie's here and excited.
We got all the, we got all the flyers for the.
Oh, in the mail, man, the mailman just come?
Yeah.
Oh, check, yeah, you guys gotta, you guys gotta see this here, who look at, you know, the California Democratic Party guys, oops, the California Democratic, we're gonna look in this camera here, let's see, look who the California Democratic Party says to vote for, Cindy Allen, the person I just made the video about, you know, with the scandal, with the fake sale of a fake company.
Yeah, but we're, here's the cool thing, check it out.
Oh, the beachcomber, oh yeah.
Yes.
The beachcomber set this up?
Yeah, I don't know, I was trying to figure it out.
Usually have to say, well, remember the article I kept citing about the whole scandal is from the beachcomber and I'm glad they got a mailer out about the whole Cindy Allen scandal, check this out.
They got a lot of details on there.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, let's see, I think maybe it says up at the top here, paid for by, Robert Fox paid for it.
Oh Robert Fox did.
Robert Fox paid for it.
You guys might remember Robert Fox, he was that, that guy that I made a video about who's against the bike lanes, well.
He's going whole hog.
He's going whole hog, but.
He's got some flyers to vote for him on there too.
But just so disappointing that the, you know, the California Democratic Party, they don't know too much about any of us, you know, but they, they, I was gonna go to their, what was that called, their, what's it called, their, the interview to be endorsed by them, endorsement interview. One thing I didn't like about the endorsement interview, I didn't go because I canceled a few days before because they wanted $50 just to meet, I'm going, why do I need, I mean, I've met with a whole bunch of other groups that didn't want a fee to have a meeting with them for their potential endorsement, and I figured, I'm probably not gonna get it from them, they're probably gonna pick the establishment candidate, so my money essentially will be funded.
Yeah, you would've gave 50 bucks to Cindy.
For them to print this flyer, cause the California Democratic Party printed this flyer for Cindy Allen, so I'm glad I didn't go, you know, cause I would've been funding this, you know, corrupt candidate that they chose, and why did they pick her? Cause they knew, she's only been Democrat since 2017, she was a Republican for that lifelong, this is crap.
Well, you met with the Young Democrats Party, right?
No, I turned them down, cause they wanted, they wanted like 35 bucks or something like that, yeah. I don't like to pay people so they can give the money to someone else I don't like.
Look, so Robert Fox was like showing how she lives in Fountain Valley, there's her pictures of her house and all of this going off.
Yeah, here's her orange, Orange County home here, yeah, her Airbnb advertisement, so kudos to Robert Fox. He and I were once foes, we didn't like to cross paths too much, but I have to say, I've gotten to know him and even though we disagree on the Broadway bike lane issue, we do agree on many other things, so we have become allies of sorts and yeah, I call him a friend now in Long Beach, strange how things work out, huh?
Yup.
We're both against corruption in local and national, we're just against corruption in politics and we, not, none of us wanna, me nor Robert wanna see the establishment, like i.e. our mayor, pick who he wants to sit next to him in City Hall to maintain and consolidate his power so they can continue ignoring us, the people.
Yup.
Yeah, so anyway, yeah, and speaking of our, speaking of our corrupt mayor, here's another one that came today, Measure A, this is crap, four years ago, they said, oh, we need to raise a sale tax to the highest permissible amount in California, which is 10.25%, crazy high, they said it needs to go to fund city services like sidewalks and.
Hey, maybe that's why they're suddenly doing a bunch of roadwork right now, like, oh shoot, we gotta better do that roadwork, we promise, so people will vote for this.
Supposed to help everything, roadwork and libraries and all these wonderful things, and then we found out that they're not being transparent, a lot of this is supposed, is going, instead, they never mentioned this in the flyers, it's going to pensions, it's going to pensions for like city workers and stuff like that, you know, so they don't tell you that, they sell you, oh, it's gonna make the libraries and everything better, the parks, and it's really going to fund pensions, and Long Beach I read is like the number two or number three like overburdened pensioned city in California.
What does that mean? What does that mean?
Um we pay way too much in pensions and and
Our city is Taxes are going too much to pensions and not enough to other things.
To services, yeah. So I, why should we pay for the past mistakes, you know? But they're selling, hey, keep the parks open longer and we'll, you know, fix the streets, you know, it's crap. Yeah, I've learned a lot, this guy, I learned a lot.
Fill those potholes on my bike route.
That's good, but yeah, I've learned a lot and yeah, here's um, here's my buddy now, Robert Fox here, he's he's got a lot of money and
Apparently, he's paid for a lot of expensive flyers.
He saved it for the last week. He saved it, yeah, I couldn't afford, I couldn't afford flyers, you know how much it costs to send a mailing to everyone in the district? It was more than all the money I had in my, from all my donations, so I couldn't afford this, that's why I said next time if I run, I know what to do now, I know what kinda monies are involved and I have better ideas on how to raise them. But I wanna thank you guys cuz pretty much like ninety-five percent of my funding for this campaign came from you guys because you guys believed in my ideals and I have you to think that I was in this race and am in this race, you know, so um but next time I'm gonna um I say it's not over yet, but I know I've learned a lot and next, I learned, I learned things, you know, you learn from um, you know I said, I was just doing it too much on my own, I'm so used to working on my own, you know, doing music, just you and me, doing YouTube, just you and me. I need to build teams, I need to build a team.
Barely delegate to each other, we are both totally lone wolves.
So I've learned and um, yeah, next time I'll retool, but it ain't over yet, I'm still fighting the fight and you know, spreading the information about the corruption.
I know, there's been some people saying that they want to hear more about that, they wanna see how it, how it all shakes out, I don't know, you might have to do a follow-up. Hey, so I'm I'm actually curious how many people here had donated to the accounts if
Oh, to my campaign? Yeah, if anyone's on, I know Beth did, um if anyone else's campaigns, say um, um
Yeah, I don't know, say me.
Me, just say me, if you, if you, if you did. Yeah, just big thanks, seriously guys, I really am grateful that you guys um contributed my campaign, if you didn't, you know, I didn't know a lot of people here in Long Beach.
See, cuz here's the thing, he has a little bit of, he has a little bit of donations left over, so we were wondering, you know, where we should
Yeah, here's the deal, I still have a few hundred dollars left, there's no way I can spend it all in advertising between now and March third. And so legally, what I need to do after the race is over, assuming I don't win, or even if I do win, the monies need to be um donated to um um legal um nonprofit causes.
You can't keep it for the next.
Yeah, can't keep it for the next election, so if you guys have some ideas, I would, I would like to donate them to both um you know, animal rights causes or like, you know, places like animal sanctuaries and donate some into Long Beach too, to causes I support here in Long Beach nonprofits. So if you guys have any ideas, let me know, yeah, Farm Sanctuary and Temecula is on my list, but I wanna make sure some of the money goes to Long Beach as well. Sail Ranch, what do I call them?
You call it Farm Sanctuary.
Oh, my bad, uh.
Sail Ranch, yeah.
Yeah, Sail Ranch and Temecula. Yeah, Farm Sanctuary is a possible one there, too, produce not pills, I do wanna give it to some causes like that cuz I do believe in what they're doing, it's, I know how expensive it is how expensive it is to run these farm sanctuaries and sale sanctuary, it's, it's, it's crazy.
Yes, sales talked about how she, she doesn't really have any big she doesn't have any like big donators or big influencers working with her, so, and she just took on some more
Super expensive, so I wanna donate to the, help the animals and I wanna donate to some um, some um nonprofits here in Long Beach as well.
Action Costanza said to send it to Joaquin Phoenix.
No, I think he's fine, I think he's done plenty of charitable contributions is my guess.
Yeah, I mean, if most of the, if most of the donations came from uh people online rather than people in Long Beach. As important to s- to use it for Long Beach causes.
Yeah, I wanna spread it between both for sure, Long Beach and outside of Long Beach. Yeah, so um
Anyways, I just came in to show you that flyer, I really wanna finish working on my Angie's Animal Friends vlog that I'm uh I'm editing in my office right now.
Oh, let's see, I was on the wrong one there, shoot.
That's what it really looks like.
I got this one and that one.
Wow, so this, this is the um
This is that, there, yeah.
Having such a hard time getting
My bad, I, it's hard for me to operate and I've done that before and thank heavens Tracy and others let me know about that. Oh, people are excited about the Angie and Animal Friends.
I had the craziest animal day the other day, you guys, I couldn't, I I'm literally, I think I have like a half hour's worth of footage. Editing it down, but like um, the squirrels, the possums, the raccoons, all came through. Uh that, the cat that's been coming by, he came by, I think he actually tried to attack Yeah, it was pretty crazy, but the raccoons are getting a little bit out of control.
Yeah, they're kinda
They've been, um, they wake up in the evening and they stand like up on this corner of the roof and start hissing like So I went outside and I was like, I was trying to see them, but like the, we have this bougainvillea that's totally overgrown and they kinda like hide in there. So I had to really like zoom in to look for them.
Lot of people like Bridge Curly, Wayward Winchester, um those are their favorites.
Angie Doolittle.
That's the whole thing, they're not gonna get like ten thousand or hundred thousand views, but the people that watch them really dig them, you know, so.
I have no idea how the animal videos that go viral and stuff do.
Knows how to popularize animal videos, please share it with us cuz we have no clue.
I have no idea, I have a lot of great animal footage now, but I really need to go out and clean the window, it's a little bit dusty, so some of the footage is a little
Wayward wants to see more cats and raccoons.
Yeah, luckily we haven't seen the cat and the raccoon cross paths yet, but I've seen the the raccoon and, or maybe even two raccoons and the possum were out there at the same time the other day. It's been nuts and like I'm pretty much out of overripe fruit to give them, so I know, cuz I haven't made it out to um Really lately and that's where I get all the seconds, the second stuff from people. Sometimes people give me like free, that's what I need to do, I need to start getting just like the free rotten apples and bring them home to the to all the beasts, they love it. Anyway, so this video is making me happy, it's so cute.
That's cool, yeah, that'll probably be, uh, I'm guessing, oh, I already have mine scheduled for tomorrow, the, I haven't even told him, I have a, I have one tomorrow, just a regular vegan video, I'm back to vegan issues. Some guy that did this crazy eating twelve eggs a day experiment challenge, so I'm Commentating or reacting to that, so yours will probably be out on Friday, I guess.
Well, it sounds good.
Yeah, so you don't have to like stress out getting it all done tonight or anything like that.
Oh yeah, so I see Roots Like a Tree is on here, we need to watch their uh Wizarding World of Harry Potter trip video. Yeah, I think it just came out. Cuz I'd heard that there was some vegan options there.
Yeah, I definitely wanna see the um Vegan Universal Studio.
But I thought the vegan options were near the Wizarding World, but actually we met up with um Brandon and Jonika this
Well, that's their channel? Okay, which one, who's on, is it both of you guys or?
I was talking to Brandon on Instagram, but anyways, they said the, the food is not actually in the Wizarding World, it's like elsewhere in
Elsewhere in Universal, just the fact that they have it, I'm curious to check it out, maybe we'll make a trek out to Universal Studios one, we've never gone together, huh?
No, huh, I couldn't tell you the last time I was there, I was probably very young.
I went once when I was a kid, so I may have been like the late seventies, early eighties and I think I went Think once more in the nineties when our Scottish friends, the the Freemans.
No, I have not been since the seventies, like when Jaws was like the big thing and I had a really cool black and white picture of me and Frankenstein, I wish I knew where that was.
Oh, they're both watching right now. Brandon, what's up guys? Yeah, check it out guys, everyone else, you can check out Roots Like a Tree, yeah, if you guys wanna see, anyone wants to see Vegan Universal Studios slash Harry Potter. They checked it out.
That's cool, um, yeah, speaking of them, I was telling them about Nut Buddy when we met up on Monday.
Mister Nut Buddy.
So I was just, I was trying to find a picture, I remember I had a lot of photos and videos of Mister Nut Buddy like before we were doing the channel. And I found a picture of him from twenty twelve. Like the classic one.
I knew Joaquin Phoenix was putting his money where his mouth is, yeah. Mul- uh Molson Musso, the video with Joaquin buying the calf and her mother from the slaughterhouse and bringing them to Farm Sanctuary.
Didn't he do that like the day after he won the Oscar?
I remember right after he won the Oscar, he went down to um the people we know who protested the Farmer John's place here. With his tux on and just went straight from the Oscar or the, what was the first one, is the first, the, what was the first one he won, the Golden Globe or the SAG?
Yeah, oh gosh, I don't know, I don't follow award shows.
Yeah, anyway, yeah, I know he just goes straight there, yeah, so yeah, he's a hero for sure. Can't believe people pick on him though, someone was like bagging on him for like, he supposedly smokes, like, does he? I don't know, and if so I don't, he's a vegan, nothing, I mean, I don't promote smoking or anything like that, in fact, I hate running through cigarette smoke or walking or, but you know
So they're gonna discount everything he's ever done because
Because he smokes, like, you know, it's like, remember vegan is not uh some kind of perfection philosophy. If you look up the definition of vegan, it doesn't say the attainment of the highest perfection known to humankind or anything like that, it's just a way of life that seeks exploit as much as practically possible, all forms of cruelty and exploitation of animals for food and clothing and other purposes.
Yeah, oh hey, you know what news I read today, I just read it, like the supposedly, god, was it Pizza Hut? It was like one of those big chain pizza places we never go to. Claim that they wanna do all vegan cheese for uh environmental reasons.
Switched to, like get rid of all dairy cheese?
Yeah, I was like, could that possibly be true?
Well, I should have done a video about that today.
I just heard about it when you had already finished, I think it was Jane Unchained posted something about.
Oh, I'll check that, that's cool.
If that's true, my mind is blown. Alright, you guys, well, have fun, I'm, yeah, it's actually kinda hot in my sweatshirt in here.
Yeah, it's warm in here, yeah, like, yeah, the lights keep it warm.
What am I stepping on, oh, your guitar thing is so close.
Danger.
Alright, you guys, have fun. Uh and if they, they ask what you're gonna have for dinner tonight, I don't know, but maybe a stir, a stir fry, an oil-free stir fry.
Let me know if you need some help with the rice and all.
Will, I will need if
Yeah, we'll do that pretty soon, yeah, I mean, we'll also be on for a bit, but yeah, edit for a little bit more, then we'll join forces and make a stir fry. Oh, there's Race Lever, I, he's back now, let's see, veganism is only the first step to perfection.
Yeah, well, we might secretly think that to ourselves, so like we shouldn't be, you know, acting like that.
But just remember guys, don't get into veganism for perfectionism or purity, you'll just fail and end up making a video in a year while you're no longer vegan.
Ryan, the rice slave, people remember.
That's me, I'm the rice slave.
Maybe he's like the rice, uh the rice chef, the rice.
The rice.
Master, rice master, instead of the slave, you're the rice master. Mastered rice cooking.
I'm the rice Buddha. Garrett wants to know what we did before our YouTube careers, actually, um maybe three years ago, we made a video about that, so if you could search our channel it, it's kinda a long story, it was like, you know, since we're a little older, we've had many jobs and careers.
Oh my god, but the most recent one was podcasting. Switched from audio podcasting to video podcasting.
Yeah, kind of, it's in a short nutshell, uh combined with like website optimization, search engine optimization and stuff like that.
Used to be, instead of just getting paid to to mention a product on your podcast you, you know, you just do a promo code, the promo code on the website would actually generate way more money than the advertisement on the podcast.
If you're, if you do well on the search engine optimization results, we did a long time ago.
But uh, but then when, you know, the, the sponsors eventually figured that out, they shut it down and they made it so it was totally not lucrative anymore.
Yeah, that sucks, that's the man trying to keep the little man down.
Of course, the corporation's like, why don't we just make our own promo code page? The middleman, but you know, we'll still give them like peanuts to mention it on their show. Anyway.
Oscar, oh, I think Oscar, are you the person, the raw person that comes here and tries to like um
Was either, do you even?
And I don't know, I, I'll give you the honest answer, purity means people that are into plant-based diets or vegan diets for the purposes of trying to be perfect in some sense or another, either perfect in as far as their toxicity level goes or their energy with the sun and God or whatever, you know, it's just some kind of perfection situation. As opposed to like not wanting to exploit and kill or harm animals or help save our planet from climate catastrophe or health and you know, the sense that's known by science, that's what I'm talking about. Let's see what Tracy says, Ryan is not seeking purity, he's saying that people shouldn't seek some kind of purity in veganism, yeah, that's basically, yeah, thank you for summing that up Tracy, I mean if you're into purity anyway, cool, I'm not gonna stop you, but that's not what veganism is about and that's not what veganism provides. I guess the only thing that would do that is your spiritual practice, you know, it's not, you know, if anything, you know, that's what we're talking about, matters of spirituality. Not like, you know, eating a cruelty-free diet.
Oh no, Oscar's trying to get banned.
Oscar, okay, you
Totally getting it twisted.
Just again, I don't need to repeat the definition of veganism again. What do you mean exploit occasionally, can you like provide a definition of what you're talking about?
Nothing to do with purity.
Yeah, let's see, I'm glad Johnny Bravo looks forward to the live streams, yeah, Johnny's always here, man, he's like hardcore, he's like, you know, full-on regular, a lot of people are.
Is Johnny Bravo a fan of the um
I'm curious, oh, he must know about that episode of the Brady Bunch.
He might not, I don't, maybe it's like a saying that goes beyond Brady Bunch. Yeah, we, it would be great if Bernie would get into the plant-based thing at the very least.
Uh, and he's older, I understand, and I know he's from like Vermont, a dairy state and all. But still, if he is talking, his talk is about being the main candidate who actually has a, a strong real position on fighting climate change, he must address animal agriculture, else the plan will ultimately not work. It's just, you know, how can you uh fight climate change and and not address the number one cause of climate change, of greenhouse gas emissions, that is.
Uh Action Costanza, gotta pay the troll toll?
Yeah, Dawn, yeah, not, not only adding Impossible Burgers um at Disneyland, but yeah, every, there's gonna be one vegan option everywhere.
Look, I was right, see, the Brady Bunch must predate what these guys are talking about. Some kind of cartoon, I will have to look that up. I have not seen the cartoon of Johnny Bravo, I've only seen the Brady Bunch where Greg fits the jacket and he plays the part of a guy that sings called Johnny Bravo and then puts all this stuff on his voice that didn't even sound like, I'm like extreme vibrato and chorus. Oh, alright, okay, I'm sorry, get out of here, let you guys have fun, let's see, popular fun animated cartoon, now I'm really curious, I'm gonna go Google it right now.
Go Google it, let me know what's up.
Alright guys, have fun.
Yeah, Jeremy, I agree with you, no politician is says, has ever admitted what the greatest source of greenhouse gas emissions is. The only one that ever came close and I gave him kudos was Andrew Yang, I made a video about that too, if you look back, just look for honor. Search to our videos, Andrew Yang, and you'll see, he's the one that made a reference to United Nations um IPCC Climate Change Committee report that I refer to, I, it came out, you know, not that long ago last year. And he read it and he understood the role of um, he said if we all went vegetarian, according to the report, we'll, we'll be fine as far as climate change goes. He gets it, he understands, you know, I'm not sure if that if then is totally true or not, but he understands the importance of it, but I'm kinda bummed when I see him go out and eat and he's still not, you know, you know, aligning his um his beliefs with action or, you know, or did I get that right, vice versa, either way, um who else y'all talking about here? Um Cory, I've, yeah, Cory Booker a vegan too, and I've never heard him really say too much about how um I haven't heard him say anything about the connection between climate change, greenhouse gas emissions and animal agriculture, he's been really just kinda reticent about saying too much about veganism. Uh and fear, I believe, of isolating himself with the voters, but you know, he didn't get that far anyway, so I don't think it would have hurt himself, like would he had to drop out like a week sooner or something like that, I'm not sure. Wow, Johnny Bravo, your, your real first, wait, your real last name is Bravo, that's awesome, I've never met a person with that for their real last name, cool. That sucks, if Booker wouldn't say, he wouldn't do anything about the county, the very least that someone like Booker and others could do, like say Bernie Sanders and AOC is in, cuz they're against, you know, these um, you know, um the socialism that we have in our country that exists for the extremely wealthy, you know people say, oh socialism, uh we have it, it's already here, you know. You know, people say, oh, socialism, uh, we have it. It's already here. You know, there's socialism for the rich. And we need to end the socialism that our government provides for the for the meat and dairy industries, all the subsidies that go to their industries. That are unfair and 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 drive the prices of their products down. Why do these wealthy, um, industries that, you know, been around for decades? Need to be subsidized anymore. That's unimmoral. I don't think our tax dollars, I believe our tax dollars should not go to fund these immoral industries. That are destroying our planet. That's something that Bernie and other progressives should work on, you know, if they really want to, um. Solve these ills of socialism for the rich and address climate change. Haven't heard, I know Tulsi is vegan. And to be honest with you, I haven't, I just haven't seen her much in the media. I've searched her out a few times. I just haven't found, um, you know, a good video, a good clip of of how where she stands on, um, um. Animal agriculture and climate change. I would love to see if if she is is bold enough to admit the connection there. Let's see, what else y'all talking about here? Hey, Big Red Corget, did you change your name? I remember, I recognize your, um. Your your user pic there, but I don't remember the name. Um, anyway, maybe I'm just getting old and forgetful. Let's see, what else y'all talking about there? Ryan for President. No, that's okay, guys. No, um. Now, I've seen enough corruption and just just pure crap, you know, again. Where is it here? Where'd it go? The, like, again, I want to show you the California Democratic Party endorsing Cindy Allen. The corrupt, um, politician who, you know, says she lives in Long Beach. Yet all the records show she's been Airbnb in her 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 condo here up until, um, just a couple of weeks ago. Just turned Democrat a couple of years ago after lifelong Republican. Like, how can the Democratic Party, the California Democratic Party? Endorse someone who's really a Republican that doesn't even live in Long Beach? This is just crap. I'm pissed. Let's see. Thanks, Jamie. I'm glad you guys liked that video. I just couldn't help it. I wasn't trying to make too many videos, um, for our YouTube channel that. Um, you know, or about the race and didn't have anything to do with veganism, but this issue, this corruption story was just so big. I felt a need to let as many people as that I possibly could know about this. The goal is we want to get like the major media on this. You know, ABC News or whatever, you know, anyone that'll come and listen and just shine a light on it because the system here is corrupt. And if she wins, it's a farce of an election and I think people need to be held accountable. She needs to, the the mayor needs to. This is a huge problem, you know, getting someone who doesn't live in our city and representing them as a Democrat and getting a Democratic Party endorsements. How come they didn't do their due diligence and see what her registration was for the prior three decades? You know, not to say it's bad to be a Republican or anything, but I'm just saying purposefully intentionally changing your party affiliation. Not because your beliefs or ideals have changed, but solely to to have the the proper or the 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 most favorable political party alignment here. Because Long Beach, as I said, is overwhelmingly Democratic, like more than two to one, three to one, something like that. So, um, you know, Republicans don't really win here and she knows that and our mayor knows that. Ah, gosh, anyway, um, what else y'all talking about? Okay, gave me a Tulsi video to watch there. Tulsi discusses animal rights and being vegan. Okay, cool. I will check that out. Let me, um. Hopefully I don't copy and paste anything else, but I'll I'll get that into my, um, like my browser's copy paste cache right now. Let's see, um. Yeah, Jamie, I'm saying it's perfectly fine to switch affiliations. I did too. I I thought I was a registered Democrat, but I was, um, registered as just no party affiliation for the longest time. And I registered for the Democratic Party so I could make sure I was involved in the primaries. Um, so yeah, that's totally understandable, but you know, to switch from a lifelong Republican registration to a Democrat. Solely to be the party, the proper party to win in Long Beach is, you know, that's a whole nother matter, you know? It's a whole nother matter. Someone who's voted Republican their entire lives as far as we can tell. And also, oh, no, I'm a progressive Democrat because that's what Long Beach wants to hear. That is just wrong. That's just lying, you know? Anyway, uh, I don't wanna get too scandalous here. Oh, yeah, I thought I read that about Trump. He did the same thing. He's a Republican because that's where he's finding he was getting traction with people. Liking what he had to say. Um, did I just get a beep here? I thought I heard something. Hmm. Maybe it was other device here. Wow, Johnny, you registered as a Republican. Wow, not to like poke anything at you for doing that. Just curious, what what? How did you choose that that of the various parties? Cause I remember the first time I signed up to vote in the, um, God, what was it? The late eighties, early nine, I think it was late eighties. I signed up for peace and freedom. And I didn't even know what they meant, what the party was about. I just liked the name, you know, okay, I like peace, I like freedom. I mean, I switched a few years after that, but you know, um, just curious. Let's see, now we're not gonna talk about abortion and sentience here, you know, it's like, you know. That that that's weird how that's become totally politicized and stuff too, but anyway, yeah, Bloomberg, there you go. Bloomberg is just like our, um, our friend here, Cindy Allen. And isn't this cool, this love shirt? Can you see that? This love T-shirt, like, oh, look, I'm all into love and peace and everything. Yeah, Bloomberg is exactly Alan, the same thing. One party for majority of their adult voting life. And all of a sudden, oh, when they see it politically advantageous to switch to the other major party. Because that's where there's an opening, a vacuum that they can come and try to fill and actually maybe win. Yeah, that's just so disingenuous and I'm hoping more more people see through that. Let's see, Zach, you're gaining some weight, um, eating potatoes? It sounds like, um, two things from from ga- about gaining weight. It could be in excess of calories and or needing some more aerobic activity. I mean, maybe you're just working out, like lifting weights, which is fine, but I've noticed since I've stopped, um, doing all this hardcore aerobic activity. Like running and psych, I haven't stopped, just weighed down in my percentage of exercise. Yeah, I I actually weigh a little bit more now, you know, so it really depends on how much you're eating and what kind of exercise you're doing. In my experience, again, I'm not a weight loss expert or anything like that. I'm just telling you how it's worked out for me. Let's see, what else you guys asking about? It's a question to your answer though. I guess I'm missing some conversations going on here, um. Yeah, Christopher, I didn't miss the whole conversation, but he's absolutely right. Two parties have a monopoly on our politics here. Yeah, on occasion, a third party will win. If you go to the Green Party website and look up their history. They've won a few smaller races, like city council races, and I don't think they, if I remember correctly, don't have anyone sitting right now. On any governmental level. It's really hard to develop a third party. And, um, with all the, with all the, um, the way the system is set up right now, it's really completely dominated. Ninety-nine percent by the two major parties, you know, sucks, you know, considering like, you know. The Democratic Party endorses Cindy Allen, hmm, endorsing a lifelong Republican, you know? Uh, anyway. Uh, what else? What's my party? I'm registered as a Democrat right now. Um, prim- you know, primarily because, um, I believe in climate change. I don't believe in, um, in helping the wealthiest people and corporations by giving them the biggest tax breaks. I believe more of that funding should go to help regular people like you and me who might be getting left behind by this widening income gap. This the this discrepancy is bigger than ever before. So, yeah, I find myself leaning more towards that if you wanna look at it from an economical point of view. Um, and I guess a moral point of view too. I said, like, climate change is probably the biggest moral issue that we're facing right now.
Okay, I just got a text.
Got a text?
I just got a text.
Okay, Angie just got a text.
I got a text.
Alright, was it from Cindy Allen, maybe?
No.
No, okay.
From Veganics.
Oh, Veganics.
Friends Veganics, they're watching the live stream.
Okay, guys.
Yeah, probably making some delicious food.
Oh, man, I miss your guys' food, man.
No, oh my god, those like moonlight.
We gotta hang out again.
Cookies dipped in moonlight.
Come over to your guys' kitchen one day again.
We really need to. So anyway, she says, hey, we're watching Ryan's livestream and someone's asking about Bernie going vegan. My friend got a great video last week in Vegas on the topic. He's eating more plant-based lately.
Oh, cuz of his heart attack, yeah.
Yeah, she said, check it out. The little girl interviewing is my, well, anyways, a friend of hers daughter's, um. And yeah, so the show is called Kid Scoop Media. And the title of it, Sawyer Jane Gets a Scoop at the Ninth Democratic Presidential Debate in Las Vegas.
Forward that to me, I'll make a video about it.
I know, that's so awesome.
Awesome, yeah. I mean, it makes so much sense. If Bernie, you know, had a heart attack and he looks, looks at the best diet for. Avoiding and reversing heart disease, plant-based, oil-free, high carb low fat vegan diet is the way to do it. Yeah, this is what we're talking about. This is when you have to really eat cleanly and well, so yeah.
But how cool that a nine-year-old kid was asking about if he's, you know, gonna go vegan.
See, this is why I'm writing, guys, you know, like when I go and speak to some of these older groups, like neighborhood associations, they don't care, you know. They're caring, they care about other things. I'm doing this for the the younger people, you know, nine-year-olds, so people who who have had no say in the the planet. That they're about to inherit being screwed up. They're gonna look at us like, why didn't you guys do something? I I can at least say, I'm trying, I'm working hard, you know? I'm not sure what your parents are doing, but I'm working my ass off, yeah? Trying to spread the news about the connection between animal agriculture.
I wasn't giggling about you, I'm sorry.
And and greenhouse gas emissions.
Yeah, there's nothing funny about that whatsoever. Yeah, anyways, yeah, you guys said thanks for the shout out. Oh, bro, I feel so hungry just thinking about them.
I know, I'm hungry now too. I'm not sure how much longer and keep this going.
She was saying that we needed to get together and do a, uh, uh, what do you call it, potluck soon. So I've been thinking like, oh, gosh, what should I, what would I bring to the potluck? Last time I brought, I brought my vegan chili to their Christmas potluck party and she had brought a different chili. So it was like a, it's kind of like a chili cook-off.
These are our our dead and company friends, a potluck?
Oh, that's hilarious. No, but I was thinking, I was like, oh, ooh, I wonder if my, um, my vegan gumbo would be a good potluck thing.
Oh, yeah, that's you can make a whole bunch of that, scoop it out, yeah.
Delicious, yeah. They'll need a bowl, though. Like, the chili's so thick, it could be on a plate, I guess. Anyways, okay, anyways, I was excited.
Oh, cool.
I, hey, I'm coming here twice for political reasons. That's unusual.
Hey, it's 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 an election year. I'm in an election and this is crazy, like, you know, this is, oh, yeah.
You gotta put this up.
Look what we got here. Got this at the California Democratic Convention, um, November last year.
I'm still my blood. You got to go to that.
I got stuff from Bernie and I got some stuff from Yang too. Yang, man, he was such an interesting cat, man. I really, really dug Yang's message and I hope it catches on, the whole idea of universal basic income. Because the new economy of our present and future is gonna be shrinking the amount of actual people working. A automatic automation and automatic automation and artificial intelligence are here and they're only gonna keep it growing exponentially.
Oh, we are, we already know how incredibly hard it is to find a job in Long Beach.
Yeah, I know, uh-huh.
Yeah. Thanks for your support, guys. We appreciate you. You make it all happen.
A wealth tax. That was, um, that's the wording of Elizabeth Warren, correct? And I've heard her explain it. I mean, I don't know if it means to be done like that. I mean, I, at the concept of the wealthy paying the tax that they ought to pay, I like how like Bernie and Yang have always brought up. That how Amazon, the world's most, oh, oh, you know, one of the world's most profitable corporations, doesn't pay any taxes. Like, how can that be? I pay taxes, you guys pay taxes. Why are they given subsidies and and not? They don't pay, it doesn't make any sense. So I've, I believe just the, just in fairness, I just believe, and tell me if this is crazy. Tell me if this is hardcore socialism or left-wingism. I just think this makes common sense. I don't think this is political. I just think people should pay their fair share. People shouldn't have weird loopholes that allow the wealthiest of the wealthy. To pay either no taxes or pay like, you know, what, like, you know, the, like, like, uh, what the the lowest income bracket taxes are. It just doesn't make any sense. It's unfair. Again, you know, I'm not sure why that's politicized. It just makes sense. Why are the the privileged allowed not to be taxed? I don't, I don't get it. Anyway. Um, no, Jeremy, Yang says one thousand dollars for every adult, every person eighteen or over. So if you're a married couple, you would get two thousand dollars under the uh, the freedom dividend as Yang was describing. So you kind of misunderstand that. You might be thinking of the experiment he did where I think he gave like a dozen families a thousand dollars a month. That was just an experiment, but his actual proposal is one thousand dollars for every person eighteen or above. So if you have, you know, a mother or father and a few kids over eighteen, that's four thousand bucks plus, you know, so, yeah. Yeah, trickle down doesn't work vegan Lindsay. They've been saying that theory for years. I'm a little older than a lot of you guys, but in the eighties, Ronald Reagan was promoting trickle down. It just doesn't work. I mean, it doesn't, it it's, there's a lot of assumptions built into that theory. It means, oh, when you have money, you're gonna actually go out and spend it in a way that makes, creates jobs. That's not necessarily true. I mean, you just might wanna put it away, save it or invest it in something that doesn't create jobs necessarily. It's not jobs in the United States. So it's, it's a theory that has, it sounds nice, but when you look at the reality of it, it it had, didn't work then and it's, it's definitely not working now. Yeah, our business is outsourced overseas. So, yeah, they spend some of that, they get some of the tax breaks here, then they spend it in another, on an, in another continent. Let's see, Killer Queen, you may have missed it. How have I heard how I'm doing in the votes? I don't think I'm pulling all that well, to be honest with you. I, there hasn't been that many polls. I've just seen some impromptu ones, like on Nextdoor. You know, and I'm not pulling that great or anything like that, like middle, bottom middle, something like that. I mean, it really, you can correlate who's pulling the best with how much money have they they have in their campaign, basically. You know, it's hard for me with my three thousand dollars that I've raised through the you guys, men, you guys giving me your disposable income, whatever you guys have. A lot of it's been five bucks. It's been a ten-dollar average or median donation, the average, the median number or amount was ten bucks. You know, I can't compete with these guys that have over a hundred thousand. I think Cindy, or person that got nominated by the Democratic Party, has two hundred thousand dollars. When she combined the money she got from special interest groups. I can't compete, three thousand dollars versus two hundred thousand dollars? No way, it's not gonna happen. But anyway, like I said, now I know what what really happens in local politics. So if I were to run again in four years, I know what needs to be done. You know, it's gonna take a lot of work, but it can be done. I just kind of jumped into it naively, thinking, alright, I'm gonna try to do something for the betterment of people and I see how it doesn't work out that way. Okay, Johnny, yeah, you said you re- I was curious, yeah, why you registered Republican, um, because, um, a lot of your political views are conservative. Okay, that's cool. Um, yeah, I respect that, yeah. Kind of curious which ones, like, like, like climate change and and, you know, that that's a huge one that seems to be politicized between the two parties. Like I said, it shouldn't be. It's just a scientific fact. Cool, I'm glad you guys liked I Rocked at the Town Hall. I I think it held up pretty well at the Town Hall. In fact, maybe I'm a little biased. But I I I truly sincerely thought I'm the person at that Town Hall debate. If you guys saw me put that up here. Uh, I think I put up like a week and a half ago, you know, I was wearing my nice suit and everything. Anyway, of all the seven candidates on stage, I thought I had the most. You didn't see the whole thing. I linked the whole debate though, if you wanna see the whole thing, but I thought I brought the most innovative ideas, um, to the table. And also they were achievable ideas. A lot of people had some crazy ideas and there was no way they could ever be implemented. Either there's two grandiose, so there's no funding that could be found for. All of mine were very practical ideas, yet innovative. Like the biggest bang for your buck ideas, but I found that ideas don't really matter too much. It's all politics, guys, like who your buddies are, um, you know? I wish it were a a battle of ideas, cuz I think I definitely would have wanted if it were that, you know, but it's more than that. Let's see, Jeremy, I actually got mine at Express and. Let's see, Jeremy, I actually got mine at Express, and it was hard to find one that met me, met all my criteria. Didn't have any animal products in there, and it was kinda athletic, you know, it stretched, it flexed, it felt good, actually. Uh, all my other suits that I got in the past, they're probably not vegan. I haven't bought a suit since I was vegan until recently. I hated wearing them, they're all stiff. I felt like I'm wearing some weird crazy Victorian thing or something like that. This one's great. I mean, I felt like I could go out and play basketball for a little bit, if I had to, you know? So yeah, it felt good. I, it was cool, too, getting just like a nice, just kind of, not nice, it wasn't expensive, you know, their stuff isn't that expensive. I know, I see how expensive suits are. It was just nice to get one that looked good on me, I felt good, I felt comfortable. And yeah, I, I can wear suits again now, cuz I have them and, and I don't feel weird, you know? So they're cool, like sometimes I'll wear them, like when we went out to, um, the, the Kat Von D Valentine Party last week. I didn't have a, 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 a nice shirt, I just had a t-shirt on, but I had my suit jacket and pants on. I love wearing that stuff, you know, I feel good in it. I like to dress up sometimes, is what I'm saying. Something I wasn't into before, I enjoy it now. Let's see. Yeah, check out Express, Jeremy. Yeah, make sure you read them all. I remember some were vegan and some were not, so just look around and make sure you, you get a vegan one. They, they changed them all the time, so just look. I don't even know if mine exists anymore. I don't even know what the name of it was, to be honest with you. They're all kinda the same. I got like a skinny fit or slim fit or something like that, you know, which looks good on my body, you know, look, you know, why not wear them? Express, well, it's, it's all relative, what's expensive. I mean, you know, a nice suit can cost, you know, not even talking about the shirt, just the, you know, the jacket and pants, like, you know, a thousand, two thousand bucks. And Express, you know, you can get out with, uh, for under like, you know, two, three hundred bucks, you know? Sometimes you see clearance ones for even less, so yeah, look around. Yeah, I would say, yeah, two, three hundred bucks, something in that ballpark. Something like that. You know, I for, I honestly don't remember what it was anymore, but it's something in that ballpark. No more Mr. Nice Guy. No, I'm still chill, don't worry about me, but yeah, I'm letting, I'm not holding back anything. Uh, I thi, I guess Angie took those political flyers away, so I don't show them and get all pissed off again, though. Let's see, was that Craig? There, there's a real fear mongering amongst some vegans about not getting enough X, Y, Z nutrients. Go find me, problems resulting from lack of Brazil nuts. I, I mean, I think I know what you're talking about. There, I see people bring up stuff all the time, like some nutrient that we might not be getting. But I usually, you know, when I make a video about that, I find like, if you're concerned about choline, well, let's check out all these plant foods that have choline. You could, you know, you, you know, usually it's like a, you know, it's not a problem. If it were, then we'd take a supplement, like B twelve. Cool, Johnny, I'm glad you're not gonna vote for number forty-five. I really think he's super dangerous for our country. Every day I see him trying to con- consolidate more power into the executive branch and take more power away from like, say, the Supreme Court, from the FBI, from, from the House and Senate. You know, it's really scary. I've never seen us move in such a like, um, kind of towards authoritarian, authoritarianism. And, you know, and, and the surprising thing is that so many people seem comfortable with that move, don't care. And I go, wow, um, this is, it's not where our founding fathers had in mind. That's all I'll say about that. So I'm glad you're, you're, um, not supporting that whole thing. Let's see, Isabella, what's going on here, wife? Sub-publicly support the radical justice protesters who visited Cindy Ellen's campaign office on Sunday. I, I actually don't know what happened there. I mean, if there were an organized peaceful protest, um, in front of her office, I'd be inclined to go down. I know, um, on, on Nextdoor, I saw a few people just loosely organized. I mean, if people are getting violent, I'm not into that. If breaking stuff, I'm not into that, you know? I, I haven't seen any evidence of anything broken. I saw someone went there to her office like the next day or later that day, and there was no evidence of broken windows or anything like that. So I'm saying, I don't support violent protest. I'm Buddhist, alright? First and foremost, I'm Buddhist and vegan. I believe in peace, I believe in compassion, I don't believe in violence, I don't believe in harm. So, um, so no. However, I do believe in justice, and I, I, I don't believe in corruption. I believe corruption needs to be uprooted and removed from all levels of government, from City Hall all the way up to the top. So if there is a peaceful protest, I mean, peaceful in the sense that we can be hardcore and express our opinions very strongly and, and, and passionately, but not crossing the line as far as like breaking windows or hassling um, employees or anything like that. No, I'm to- totally not into that, you know? So hopefully that answers your question, where I stand there. I said, I don't know exactly what happened. I've heard conflicting reports on how that protest went. Yeah, maybe it was radical groups doing radical stuff, you know, but they can be, they can, you can be a radical group and still not, um, be violent or cross that line. And that's, I'm fine with that. If you're a radical group that doesn't, you know, radical left group that doesn't cross the line, fine, you know, whatever, you know? A lot of people consider vegans to be, um, radicals, you know? So I, I understand, you know, what it's like to be considered a radical. It's all kind of in the eye of the beholder. Let's see, um. Uh, where, where'd you go? Um, ah, I kinda missed some stuff there. Alright, so anyway, um. Need some water here. How long have I been doing the livestream here? Where's my little counter? Okay, not terribly long, almost an hour twenty. Alright, um, Race Lever, don't stop his question here. Better you, better world. Ask your question and I will try to see it. A lot of stuff streams by me here. You gotta understand, with a hundred nineteen concurrent viewers, I'm not gonna see everything, but ask your question. And Race Lever, unless he says something like disgusting or hateful, well, I'll, I'll, I'll check out his question, okay? I don't wanna be accused of censorship here, but I do give our moderators full power to ban people or being hateful in any way, shape, or form, or just being a complete troll, alright? So if you ask a question, ask it in a respectful, thoughtful manner. If you think it's gonna be a sensitive question, that might get you in trouble. Just be cool, ask it in a, a sensitive, thoughtful manner. That goes for anyone. Let's see, I see people replying, exotic food, um, I don't know, what the hell are we talking about Brazil nuts for? Okay, um, I don't eat Brazil nuts, flax seeds, and seaweed every day to get our RDA of nutrients. Um, I don't do that, and yet I've put my, I, I don't know about you, better you, better world, but I put my blood tests up here on YouTube every twelve to eighteen months. I've been doing this since twenty thirteen, and I'm not deficient in anything. In fact, my doctors, I've been to like three or four doctors now since I've been doing this, cuz of health insurance changes and stuff like that. And each one is always amazed at the results I have for being someone of my age. You tell me how most people my age, they s, they're, they're horrible, and their health is awful. Their hemoglobin A1Cs are sky high, all their cholesterol's are sky high. They're low on nutrients, so I'm not sure what you're saying, that we need to eat all this weird exotic foods. I don't eat Brazil nuts. I mean, I've had a few, I haven't had any Brazil nuts for maybe like six, seven months or anything like that. And furthermore, what do you think, why do you think Brazil nuts are in stores? Are they there to supplement vegans? No, they're there just for your average non-vegan person. So you can't blame Brazil nuts on vegans, just like people like to blame avocados on vegans. So I'm not sure even by, that we need to eat exotic foods. What exotic foods am I eating to like, you know, stay healthy? I'm not sure what you're talking about there. It just sounds like you're making some stuff up here. You, you're doing what I call the vegan fantasy that non-vegans have. You have some kind of fantasy of how vegans eat. But why don't you just see how real vegans eat, like myself? Angie and I have dozens upon dozens of videos on our channel where we show you what we ate in a day, and you're gonna have a hard time finding any of these exotic foods, you know? Like, I don't even think flax is all that exotic, and I rarely have flax seed. I mean, we have some in the cupboard or fridge, and I never remember to put it in like a smoothie or anything like that, seriously. So I'm not sure what you're talking about. Better you, I have like had my iodine and selenium checked, um. Who gets that checked in their blood test? Who here goes to their general practitioner and says, give me a blood test, oh, and make sure there's iodine and selenium in them? I mean, why are vegans beholden to? If my Uncle Joey doesn't have to do that, if you don't do that, if your dad and brother and sister don't do that, why do I have to? Just cuz I'm vegan? That makes no sense. Your Uncle Joe who eats at McDonald's every day isn't beholden to get an iodine and selenium test? This is just crazy. And does your Uncle Joey put his blood tests up? Where are your blood tests for, for that matter? You know, mine are up there for all to see. Mine are a matter of public record, full transparency. I even like show the complete test, all pages, so I let you, if you want to, you can pause the video and look at every last thing, cuz I can't discuss every last nutrient in my video, it'd take ten hours. So you can see everything there. It's there for all to see. Yeah, flax isn't that exotic, yeah. How come that's considered an exotic food? How do you, the non-vegan, get to selectively choose what's considered an exotic food? And not only that, exotic food that vegans must eat in order to stay alive, you know? I rarely eat any of those foods you're talking about, and not only am I alive, I'm healthier than your average fifty-two-year-old. I'm more physically fit than your average fifty-two-year-old. My body should be breaking down. I should be like crawling on the floor instead of slam dunking basketballs. Yeah, Craig puts up, I'm healthy, so why are you pushing me? Like, how, how much healthier can I be? I, I have, what, seven years of blood tests. I think actually the one I put up in twenty thirteen was the blood test from twenty twelve. You know, I didn't have my channel till twenty thirteen, so I showed my most recent blood test. I have a blood test, blood test has been going back to twenty twelve. And on top of that, I showed a blood test from nineteen ninety-nine when I was not vegan, and guess what? My blood tests were way worse in nineteen ninety-nine, when I was not even vegan, they were worse. So how can you explain how veganism is destroying my health when my only non-vegan blood test from the past was way unhealthier than any vegan blood, blood test I've had? And again, all these are up there. Just go find my videos, you can see this for yourself, full transparency. Yeah, there you go. How exotic is flax? Yeah, Dave's Rockin' Bread has flax and other seeds. You can get it pretty much any major grocery store now. That's not too exotic. You can buy flax seed at any grocery store now. You don't have to go to a weird health store, vitamin store. It's not that exotic. Oh, hi Jamie, how is my ankle? Good question. My ankle, my ankles are a lot better. For those of you who are, have been watching for a while, I injured my ankle in a vlog from about a month or so ago playing basketball against my friend Marquise, and that wasn't too bad of a sprain. I was able to get up and play and still win the game. But the next week, I twisted my other ankle, my right ankle, and that was a more serious injury. It's just now, I think, becoming almost normal, almost. It's probably a grade-one sprain, um, comparing it to my memory of past ankle sprains in my life. So that is better now. Um, I'm still dealing with a little bit of a cold, um, slightly sore back, but that doesn't really affect my, my athleticism too much. So I think now I'm ready, as soon as this cold goes away, to get back hardcore into my, my training. And I, so I haven't been able to do as much basketball and stuff. I've been, um, I've been playing a little bit obs to stay in shape, but I've been focusing more on upper body strength training, because, um, yeah, since my legs aren't doing that good, my ankles aren't doing that good. I, my upper body's fine and healthy, so I've been getting stronger up there, because, you know, I kinda tend to focus more my time on the lower body for, you know, obvious reasons for basketball. Any vegan mutual funds, Dawn? I've been looking for some, and the ones I've seen that claim to have some kind of vegan philosophy, they're just, you know, investing in the same old companies, you know, S and P five hundred type companies, it seems, or maybe some Russell two thousand type level ones. But I haven't found a good one yet. Let's see, better. Race Lever called out our, our, our buddy here. He says, Race Lever, I don't have time to cite studies, but I know of plenty. But if I go find them, they won't get read. Um, no, better, if you know plenty of studies, take the time right now. I'll be here. Go take five minutes. Show us these studies that, um, say that vegan is, veganisms need exotic foods, or whatever Race Lever is pressing you, or, or questioning you on. I'll, I'd be curious, maybe I'll make a video about it, and I'll stop being vegan, better you, better world. So please, show me a study that, what I'm doing here, veganism, even though I'm not doing it for my health, but my health happens to be extremely good, as my blood tests and, and athleticism show, I'm doing it for the animals. Animals don't need to die in order for me to live. I'm completely against killing, our planet killing seventy billion animals every year, needlessly, and I'm totally against us destroying our planet in order to feed all these frigging farm animals that don't need to be raised into existence and involves a, a quick cruel death for people's meat-eating pleasure. So show me, um, anyway, the health reason. I know you don't care about this other stuff, but show me the health stuff, how veganism is so horrible. I want, I wanna see what's gonna, what you're gonna show me, well, that'll debunk the position of the American Dietetics Association. Please, show us. I'll, maybe I'll stop being vegan, I'll make a video tonight, why I'm no longer vegan, so show me, please. Maybe I'll join them. Let's see, ethical rev- revolution, flax goes back to over thirty-six thousand years ago. Ooh, that's a really, I guess that is an exotic food if you wanna look at it that way, but it's, yeah, I see your point there. Yeah, it's not that weird for humans to eat flax if flax seeds are available. You guys are saying a lot of stuff of, okay. I'm seeing better world, why are you here right now? Go show me these studies that show that vegans are gonna become deficient, or whatever you were discussing with Race Lever. You said you don't have time. I'm telling you right now, stop talking to us here. Devote five minutes to bring one, maybe two studies, if you know plenty. Just bring at least one study that shows us how awful veganism is and whatever you're telling Race Lever. So go do that, please do so. Let's see. So we'll wait here, we'll just wait here for him to come back. Now, I'm just, we'll talk, but we, we will wait, though. We will not answer any more of your questions, better you, better. No, you're still here, go. Um, I'm gonna block you right now, not cuz I think you're a bad person, but I'm gonna put you in timeout, better, you better, world. Until, I need you to go and find me these studies, okay? That's what, you, you're not allowed to talk until you bring some of these studies back. So we're gonna, everyone else will continue talking here as we wait for our, our friend here to go find these studies. Or one study, just bring back one study that shows us how horrible veganism is, whatever his point was, I don't even know. But just bring one of these studies here, and if I'm convinced by it, I'll stop being vegan tonight. So let me see this study, why, why veganism is so wrong on whatever level. So we'll wait, and we, yeah, use the timeout wisely, huh? So yeah, he keeps wants to talk, but we don't want him to talk. We want him to show us why. Don't you guys wanna see? If there's some study out there that veganism is so horrible or bad or whatever, don't you wanna see it? I wanna see it. He's got my curiosity. I totally wanna see this study. I'm sure you guys do too, so we will wait for him as he goes and finds, cuz he has plenty of studies. That was his quote, plenty of studies. So all we need is one. If he brings back one, okay, that was awesome. Bring me some more. I'd like to see these studies. Yeah, see, you guys are curious about these studies too, it's not just me. Alright, so anyway, as we wait for our friend, better you, better world V to bring us a study. And remember, if you're still watching Better World, you're only in timeout for like three or so minutes, so you're not banned or anything. Just wanna quiet you down, so you can go to Google or whatever you need to do and find these studies. See, Johnny wants to see the study or studies too. Yeah, we love science. We're a very scientific-minded group here, you know? I follow the science-backed diet, you know? Timothy S., I agree with you, there's always one troll that seems to find the right, but maybe he's not a troll. Maybe he's a messenger of truth. We will see. Maybe he will just blow all our minds, and collectively, all hundred eighteen, seventeen of us here will just say, hey, we're not vegan anymore because of that's, you know, whatever information he's about to bring to us. And I'm, I'm, I'm waiting with an open mind, an open heart, to see what he has to show us here. Cuz maybe this will be the day that will change my life forever. We will see. Yeah, maybe he's our new cult leader, who knows, huh? Let's see. Alright, um, okay, you just handled that. That was a fine comment there by As, Asim Bolden. Hope I'm pronouncing your right, your name right there. Tracy got it. Okay, cool. Okay, so, um, yeah, when people bring up, well, vegans need to supplement, you know, it's unnatural. Yeah, you raise a good point there, Dennis. Like, why do you think the multi-billion dollar supplement industry exists? Is it there to service vegans or even predominantly, predominantly vegans? No, it's not, you know, it's just to serve people, you know, primarily overwhelmingly non-veg. So a vegan has to take some B twelve. Oh, boy, that doesn't mean our diet is wrong or unnatural or anything like that. Surprised no one's calling me out. Hey, the reason why you got a cold is cuz you're vegan. You know, if you're not a vegan, you never get a cold or flu or anything like that. Yeah, Jorge, that'll be the new name. I'm waiting for our friend to come back and convince me and I'll change the channel name to Happy Healthy Not Vegan. We will see. We are waiting. I'm missing some of the conversation here. Alright, so hopefully our timeout has been enough time for our buddy to come back. But, um, I guess we'll be waiting for a while. I don't, I honestly don't think he's gonna come back with a study. What do you guys think? Does anyone think he's really gonna come back with this mind-blowing study that shows that veganism is somehow wrong? Or unhealthy or whatever the thing is, it's gonna be so overwhelmingly like, whoa, you know? What have we been doing all these months or years? He's still looking for one, huh, Race Lever, huh? And if he's still looking, huh, it's gonna be crickets, huh? I don't, I really are not, you know, not too optimistic about him bringing anything of any substance back here, but we will give him the benefit of the doubt. Yeah, there's, there you go, Action Costanza. He doesn't have time for studies, but it's just the same question over and over about these exotic foods. Cholesterol will clog his brain arteries while he's searching. Well, he, he claimed that he was vegan strangely. I mean, it doesn't make any sense. Why would you be vegan if you knew all these horrible things about the vegan diet? Doesn't make any sense, huh? That's what blows my mind about certain like anti-vegans or even some anti-vegans who are vegan and have vegan channels with the word vegan in their name. I don't wanna mention any of her name, um, but you know what I'm talking about. Why is she or them vegan? Yet they say all these horrible things about how vegan is so horrible, it's so unhealthy, and they're not even in it for animal rights or anything like that. Then why the hell are you even vegan if you think it's so unhealthy and you don't give a crap about animals? Why are you doing this for? I mean, are you a paid shield or something like that? I don't understand why you would. What, what do you get out of it? What is there any benefit of it? It makes no sense. You guys know what I'm talking about too. I'm not mentioning any names. I'm not mentioning any names of anyone, but why are these people with vegan in their name? They don't like animals. They don't like, they're not into animal rights. They don't, they think vegan diets are inherently unhealthy or at least don't offer any benefits of any kind. Then why are they vegan? Can someone tell me that? I don't, it just doesn't make any sense. Why would you do something that you didn't think was any good and didn't care about? Oh, you found the links? You can't post the links. Um, let's see how we can get around that. Any, any guys have a, um, a workaround? Yeah, maybe, um, um, yeah, maybe you can type it. Yeah, if, if, what do you guys, yeah, maybe name the study. Can you give us the title of the study? You could do that. You don't have to put the link, bro. Just copy and paste the title of the study. Or if you got it on PubMed, you could paste the PubMed ID in here and we'll be able to find it afterwards. So yeah, just gave, name the study and Race Lever will provide the link. Alright, so just type in or paste the name of the study. Just paste the name of the study. Yeah, we'd all love to see it. Oh, Lennon, she does care about animals? Okay, I take that back then. I thought I saw a video where she said she doesn't like animals. Yeah, mods can link, moderators like Tracy, Race Lever and me, we can paste the link, but yeah, you can't. So anyway, yeah, just type in the name of the study or paste the name of the study. You can paste in a name of a study. Or you could paste in the PubMed ID and Race Lever will find it that way. So do that. Okay, where is our man? Where'd our, where'd our man go? I mean, how long does it take to copy and paste the title? Jeez, how long? I could paste the title right now. If you have a, if I had a, a, a study on my web browser right now, it would take me three seconds max to copy and paste it into here. Okay, you're freezing up. Alright. Alright, so, alright, you guys excited to see this study name? So that's kinda ironic. He came back after all that searching and, um, and now the laptop is freezing up. Um, do you have a, a cellphone, Better, you Better World? You can, um, hop on this livestream on another device and, and, and give us the, the study name or PubMed ID. We'll, 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 you know, can you do that? We're all excited. You see, you have our undivided attention right now. We wanna see this study. Okay, Race Lever, you see the title there? Alright, um, so go, go have at it, Race Lever. Get, um, copy it, find the link if you don't mind and paste it here. And then, um, I, I, it's gonna be a second before we can review it, but can someone tell us why we should not be vegan? Because of iodine deficiency? It sounds like he found an article that studied iodine deficiency on, on, on vegans and vegetarians. But is that gonna show that vegan diets are inherently deficient, inherently dangerous and life-threatening? We will see. So Race Lever is at work here. Yeah, Timothy, yeah, good point. Like, how come you can't get these, these nutrients from another way? I mean, um, first of all, I'm sure you can eat foods, whole food plants that contain any of these nutrients of concern. And if, if you couldn't, say you live somewhere where you didn't have access to such foods, there's always a supplement. If this is really an issue for you. Now, I haven't read any Marcus Aurelius codi. No, I know who exactly you're talking about. Now, um, you don't, in, in philosophy, yeah, you don't really read anything from Romans, really. No, just like kinda Greek philosophers up to like Neo-Platonists kinda ends right around there. Um, yeah, nothing from Romans, really. Yeah, Mole and Muscle, good point that omnis and carnis are deficient in many things, like say potassium. What was the stat you guys know in fiber? Like ninety percent of, of people are, are deficient in potassium in fiber. Does that mean their diet is null and void? No, it just means they need to eat more fiber and, and, and plants. Okay, so here's, here we go. So Race Lever posted something from the article here. Um, the sample size of vegans was fifteen vegans. And, um, let me, let me click on, let me copy the link here to, copy link address. Let's see, um, maybe I can get it in the web browser here too. Alright, so, um, let me put on the screen here, um, browser. Let's check it out here, um. Okay, so they looked at the urine excretion of fifteen vegans and thirty-ish, um, vegetarians and thirty-five adults on a mixed diet. And the results show that under conditions of alternative nutrition, I guess I gotta read the study to see what they're talking about there. There's a higher prevalence of iodine deficiency, which might be a consequence of exclusive or prevailing consumption of food of plant origin, no intake of fish and other sea products. Okay, I'd like to read more about this. I'd like to see what these, um, folks were eating. Let's see. Let's check it out here. Ah, okay, I won't be able to see the entire article unfortunately. I have my ways of doing it, but I can't do it online cuz it's not fully legit. So, um, I'll have to check it out later. Yeah, let's see the year of the study it leaves, Tom. Let, let's check that out. What year did the study come out? Two thousand three. So, um, the reason I like to point that out, and I thought about that earlier, thanks for reminding me. The reason why I wanna point out a study from two thousand three on vegan diets might not be, um, the best is that, um, there really wasn't that much information about veganism back then. There really wasn't, you know, YouTube, there was no YouTube or anything that, I'm saying people eat a lot more intelligently now. There's a lot more information about eating a healthy, balanced vegan diet as the kind recommended by, say, the American Dietetics Association, the British Dietetics Association. So, um, yeah, I'm kind of dubious about what these, um, supposed vegans were, how, you know, how nutritious their diets were. I'd like to read the study and I said I can, I just can't do it online with you at this moment cuz it involves going to a, through a kind of a gray area of, um, accessing the, the scientific journal. And if, yeah, here's a great point, but from the vegan Lion Lindsay. If it were that big of a deal, iodine deficiency, long-term vegans like me here would be dropping dead. You know, Chris Vegan Zombie, twenty-plus-year vegan, dropping dead. We should be falling apart. Cuz if you have a deficiency in one nutrient there, it carries over, you know, there's cascading problems. And it's like you're just walking around with an iodine deficiency and everything else is cool. We should be falling down, dead and sick rather than kicking ass. So anyway, let's see what else you guys are talking about here. Let's see, we saw, yeah, the sample size is rather small, like what, was it dozen vegans? But the vegan group has less than half the number as other two groups measured. Yeah, that could be a problem. You can statistically account for that. I, I wouldn't knock it off for that, but that is a really small sample size. Like I said, vegans, thirteen vegans from twenty thirteen, um, you know? And where is this study done? Um, let's look at it again. Can anyone figure out where this is? Cuz I'm looking at the, the names of the authors here and, um, you know, they, it might not be like even like the United States, let alone the Western world. I'm kinda wondering if they're like vegans and like maybe like Prague or, you know, Russia or something like, I don't know. I'm just saying. You know, I would say that the best chance of finding people eating a healthy, plant-based diet would probably be in like, you know, the United States, England, Australia, something like that. Well, thanks Tracy. Thanks for, for staying with us as long as you could tonight. Appreciate it. It's always good to see you. Tell Will I said hello and, yeah, I'm feeling better. Thanks for the good vibes. Yeah, how about, yeah, Skills Net brings up a good point. What about all the nutrient deficiencies for those on a standard American diet? When you still eat meat, yeah, like a lot of people, you're taking all those supplements that they have in the vitamin stores, you know? So, um, what about that? Does that mean eating like a non-vegan diet is like, you know, like, should be, you know, there's no conclusion you can draw from that. Just, you know, some people take supplements. Let's see, what else have we got here? Alright, Race Lever, are you on top of his claims here? Um, iodine status in Nordic countries? Neonatal hypothyroidism due to a maternal vegan diet? Well, that's interesting because if that were so, how come the American Dietetics Association, I know they changed their name since then, but, um, why, why have they reviewed healthy, I'm sorry, plant-based vegan diets to be healthful and adequate for people in all phases of life? And that includes pregnancy. So, and, and they didn't just pull this conclusion out of their butts. They reviewed scientific literature. In fact, if you go read their position paper, they link to scientific literature. So I'm not sure why, um, they would make such a proclamation, such one that could have dangerous consequential effects if they are wrong. And they're, remember, they're the largest professional association of health professionals in the United States. Why would they put their name behind that, their position, saying even pregnant mothers can, can be vegan? So anyway, Darth Vegan, you're gonna be there on the twenty-ninth. Twenty-ninth is on a weekend, so just by default, I can't be there. I have a, a Southern Californian's pass. And, um, yeah, pretty much every weekend day is completely off the table, but enjoy it. Yeah. There's a slim chance we might be there on the twenty-eighth. We will see. Um, but let me know if you're gonna be there then. Alright, so, um, Action Costanza, Knott's Berry Farm, great question. We have looked into that. I've researched going to Knott's. Um, I think it was just like last summer I was looking at it, looking at their food options. It looks horrible. It looks like they haven't really updated their menus much since like the eighties or nineties, but, um, let me know if I'm wrong. Maybe things have changed. Cuz, you know, everywhere's adding, you know, Impossible and Beyond Burgers and stuff like that. Not to say I like that kinda stuff, but, um, you know? Let me know. It looked pretty like Slim Pickens at Knott's. Let's see, what's my thought on Mickey's Fun Wheel? Uh, that's that big circus or Ferris wheel thingy there at California Adventure Park. There's no way in hell I'm gonna go on that thing. Man, that thing is just tall. No, uh-uh. I don't, I like, I like slow rides, even though I guess that's technically a slow ride. I like slow rides that don't have the possibility of like falling two hundred feet or anything like that. So no, not gonna go on that. Johnny Bravo, you're gonna be a, I thought, okay, that hasn't happened yet. Your bodybuilding competition? Cool. Make sure when you're there and everyone sees how small you are, that they know that it's produced from plants. Let them know that, you know, where'd you get your protein? It's not an issue for you. Let's see, so let's see what our, our friend's, um, conclusion here. His point is that, what if we didn't have access to these foods in the past? Could we still get enough as nutrients as vegan? Okay, here's the thing, in the past, I've talked about this many times. I really don't care about what people may have eaten in the past cuz, because often it's a matter of speculation. I haven't seen too many anthropobiol, anthropologists or paleobiologist, anthropologists specialize in the, 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 the plant-based options of, of people in our past. And it's, and it differs, it differs on their, where they're at in the world. You live on the coast and, near the coast and equator, you live in the Arctic or anywhere in between, you have different sorts of foods. So, um, what I care about is what happens now. I don't wanna live like a caveman. I really don't. That's not my goal. I don't wake up every day and say, man, I wish I could be a frigging caveman. I wanna be beyond caveman. I'm a modern man. I wanna be a frigging Superman of the future. So what I'm saying is, I don't really pattern the way I eat off, off like how people ate twenty thousand years ago. And none of us do. None of us eat like people did twenty thousand years ago. Plants have changed, and if you're not vegan, animals have changed. We've, you know, created animals that don't, didn't really exist back then through selective breeding. So my point is, who cares? It doesn't really matter. Like when people discovered that, recently, when, um, it was figured out that, um, duckweed contained a bioavailable B twelve. A lot of people are speculating, oh, maybe that's what their ancestors ate in the past. Like, I don't know. I don't care. Who cares? It doesn't matter. Thing is, we know now that it has bioavailable B twelve and we can enjoy it and, and, and benefit from it. So, yeah, who cares what people did in the past? It doesn't concern me. Like, why should it? Why should I care about how people ate twenty thousand years ago or a hundred thousand years ago when we don't have access to those foods? And in fact, our bodies are different. If you wanna go back to like, you know, um, um, Homo erectus, Australopithecus, how far back am I gonna go? The further back you go, their bodies are different from ours. Their digestive tracts are different from ours, their teeth are different from ours, and the foods they eat are different from ours. It matters because maybe we aren't designed to be vegan. Um, what do you mean not designed to be vegan? I mean, can we eat plants and, and exclusively eat plants and not die? and and exclusively eat plants and and not die from diseases yes obviously so this is I'll be vegan ten years this year I mean if there was some kind of problems I should be dead Chris vegan zombie should be dead I mean what do you mean that we're not designed I mean something should be happening negatively by now some problem some symptoms some disease should have manifested itself if I were so deficient in something you're just speculating pulling stuff out of your butt basically you know just what if what if a leprechaun popped out of a planet is a sea box seven and started sitting next to me what if you're just making stuff up you know I mean you're not talking about reality show me some study that says I can't be vegan because I will die you know he found a study from two thousand three with thirteen people of dubious diet I I can't I have to go and you know I tell you some backdoor ways to see the entire text you know that they may have been deficient and 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 um or had they said not deficient but had the more likely or had le- lower levels doesn't mean that they're they're unhealthy or anything like that I have to read the whole thing but so so far that's not convincing that oh I'm gonna give a veganism because thirteen people from two thousand three had lower levels of iodine than some other people did I mean so what if that were really an issue I would just take a supplement if that were really an if issue if I found out somehow my iodine levels were low and they needed help I would just take a supplement a vegan supplement and that way still my my number one reason for being vegan was not I didn't come into it to have the greatest health in the world or anything like that as some people uh think I did I came because it's wrong it's morally wrong to kill animals for us to live if we don't need to if we can simply eat plants and not only be healthy but thrive that's reason enough it just so happens that the the preponderance of the scientific literature shows that eating a vegan diet happens to be healthy which is awesome you know anyway yeah he's a troll I'm giving him too much attention what else should we be talking about here yeah twenty thousand years ago planet power says we were starving we were not living to be a hundred years old we were average lifespan was like twenty years old that's why I said I don't want to be a caveman disease may have not had enough time to manifest itself if people were all dead before thirty years old so who cares again it doesn't matter to me what some random people ate in some random part of the world and some random point in time in the past I don't care it doesn't affect me when I go to the market those foods that those people ate back then and that don't don't exist I I care about what I can get that's that's I like that's healthy ah anyway you might be freaked to final who knows huh we don't know yeah Johnny Bravo doing just fine on a vegan diet mixed martial arts fighter you know um competing in his first bodybuilding competition but you know according to our friend here um Johnny should just be falling apart just like I should be falling apart do I think all people can thrive on a plant-based diet ADA says it's suitable for people but doesn't say it's optimal for everyone I mean everyone is a very um precisely defined word it means every last person on the planet no exceptions whatsoever you know you see what I'm saying it's a binary word all or nothing you know it's everyone means a hundred percent not ninety-eight not ninety or not ninety-nine point nine 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 everyone I don't know I'm I for all I know I can in my mind conceive there might be some medical condition where a a person has some disease I've never heard of that doesn't process or absorb plant protein I don't know it's possible I mean yeah I don't know barring those just kind of far-fetched mind experiments that I'm kind of doing right there yeah I think it's suitable for everyone but there's some rare conditions that affect like one out of every million billion people possibly I don't know and if that were true that doesn't debunk veganism it just shows people have some medical conditions case in point I have a very close friend who um after going to the doctor for some issues came back with the results and learned that she cannot properly process or digest animal protein or is it animal fat I think it's animal fat it causes problems for her I said oh great you should just go vegan then this is like you know the universe telling you to go vegan your tests here and your doctor saying you can't process animal fat has she gone vegan no you know but I'm just saying there are conditions like that you guys are funny I'm reading some of your comments here oh man you guys are funny let's see um I agree with you Jorge just eat good food you know you'll get good nutrients okay so better our friend saying that um his nutrients of concern selenium iodine are deficient are super the deficiency deficiency in them is common super common worldwide okay then it's not a vegan problem then you know if vegans are not doing any worse than non-vegans then stay vegan it's more I think if anything you shot yourself in the foot there it's more of an argument to be vegan you know I if it were such a problem let's put it like this let's be really real here guys okay if selenium and what was the other one he put here um iodine deficiency were such a problem because he said it's the efficiency are super common worldwide okay let's say that were true if deficiencies in those two nutrients were super common worldwide you would think maybe there's some kind of disease that is produced by such deficiencies if so we should know the name of this disease right if we should oh yeah you got this thing or that thing because everyone's getting it's so common worldwide you know to be deficient you know everyone gets this disease I'm saying if it were such a disease there there were such a disease caused by deficiencies in these nutrients A there should be a name for it B our health professionals you would think but would be on the lookout for it they would treat it they would they would give you blood tests to see if you're deficient they would yeah they'd want to treat it just like you know like you know vitamin D deficiency or vitamin B twelve deficiency so it really can't be that much of an issue if it's really this worldwide health scare or problem as our friend is saying here yet none of us can name a disease that's caused by such deficiency and none of our health professionals are looking for such deficiencies so how bad can it be okay race lever thank you race lever here he says in one of the studies that this our friend mentioned in regards to iodine slash hyperthyroidism actually says in the conclusion that of it that vegan diets are actually protective despite despite having lower levels of iodine so it shows that even though I've seen this happen too in other nutrients of concern now even though like it was like omega threes even though in the here the study too even though vegans might get less dietarily uh of of a certain nutrient that still any disease outcomes that might come from such a deficiency aren't there in fact our outcomes are better therefore what they say the protective effect of a vegan diet so that's what I'm saying if it were such a problem there should be some bad health outcomes and they're not you know or else we'd hear about them yeah I'm with you can't stop blind I know we have seaweed farming if you really need iodine you know farm a nut go for it huh yeah plenty of non-vegans have hypothyroidism yeah one of my exes ha- has a thyroid situation race lever what's your study buddy hey yeah I know if he put the study there that's funny when someone like Chris Cresser y'all put out a cite a study you know and he thinks it's disproving veganism once and once you read it and I've done this many times actually says something in there that proves or shows that veganism is actually good for you in this case the study our friend put up here our race lever read through it and found that the study said veganism offers a protective effect I don't know how much more clear that can be a protective effect better let me just end this whole thing better you just dominated our night here and I guess we're all kind of amused or else we wouldn't be entertaining him but let me just put it like this if you are very concerned about iodine deficiency and what was the other one you're into whatever it is um just take your freaking nutrient if you're I mean have you A have you had your blood tested um or where's our friend better you better world have you had your blood tested in these two nutrients that you're so concerned about here let's see what he says but I don't even want to hear anything more from him just yes or no have you had a blood test to see if you're deficient in these two nutrients that you've been going off on all night we'll see what he says selenium thank you selenium and iodine so let's see if our friend who's like the champion of this cause has even had his own or her own personal blood test done to see if there is a deficiency in this person sorry you guys are funny there I'm starting to get hungry now thinking about all this food yep that's right there about race lever he has the highest level let's see racer what'd you read there so the study that won with the fifteen vegans proves the study with many more vegans is wrong oh I gotta I gotta check these out alright see you Johnny Bravo get to the gym get small let everyone know that you're there to kick ass at your not the gym only too about your contest or your competition Craig okay Greg let's point out Craig's there yeah look up um selenium content in wheat that you can get these so-called exotic nutrients or whatever our friend was calling them from some very non-exotic foods so um so there goes that part of his argument that humans are or vegans are forced to eat these really exotic foods but I still want to see if our friend even got a blood test um no oh you said no you're scared of needles so you didn't get a blood test so who are you to talk about these deficiencies so let me ask you this you didn't get a blood test are you supplementing somehow with selenium and iodine so let us let's see if you're sup since you're afraid to get a blood test you have no idea if you're deficient and um anyway let's see if you're supplementing because that's if you're concerned about them that's your thing you know supplement and and just call it a day you don't have to like go to every other vegan and say hey you're deficient even though I don't know if I am because I'm afraid of needles but you're probably deficient oh man Ja- Jack Jackson I don't know man that's a good question I've never thought like that I don't know and if I could stop one I would stop one I guess I would see where the most suffering is you know I'd have to quantify suffering calculate it out and see which one causes the most suffering or at least maybe the most environmental damage so I guess that's where I would go or for now I'm thinking about whichever one I'd quantify try to calculate the environmental damage caused by each of those and um shut that one down let's see where's our friend here to see if he is at least taking supplements because these you know nutrients of concern are so you know hardcore okay better you didn't answer my question just tell me yes or no are you taking any supplements and Craig points out you want iodine eat potatoes it's a selenium eat wheat you take only B twelve and hate it huh okay that I think that reveals a lot what do you guys think that he takes only B twelve not iodine not selenium which are his big ones he's so concerned about and the one he does take B twelve he hates taking it so I'm not sure what the issue here there's something um there's something going on with this person let me try to figure it out I would say this um better whatever bet your better you better world if you are truly vegan and you're in it for the right reasons meaning you are in it because you believe it's wrong to kill and exploit animals for food for clothing any other purpose if that's why you're vegan um then you know then if your concern is about the nutritional adequacy of your diet take a supplement or two and just you know be done with it you know how is that so like disturbing for you to take a B twelve supplement if I mean you know that's all I do basically is take a B twelve supplement from time to time and that's it you know I mean that's in fact for most people my age fifty-two you should see the laundry list of medications and and supplements they take if I just squirt my mouth by sublingual beach house spray once in a blue moon and that's all I I gotta do to be vegan I'm down with that that's you know that's a win I'm with you too I'm a ten almost ten-year vegan and in it for the animals but concerned about health I'm saying if you are truly concerned about your health you should get a blood test barring that if you're not supplement with these nutrients that you're afraid of the problem is maybe you're already finding them maybe you'll have too much I don't know that's why you should get a blood test so you can't use the I hate needles excuse or anything like that you should go see what's up you know and if you have to take a supplement you know do it and say hey at least I'm not like killing all these animals and 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 hastening climate change through animal agriculture if that's all you gotta do cool so I wouldn't I think your your fears are misplaced there um you shouldn't hate taking supplements you know I mean it's no big deal you know I spray I take a B twelve spray once in a blue moon who cares you know why is that so horrible for me to go with my B twelve spray I mean I don't hate it it's not that I like it either it's just kind of neutral just is what it is it's like you know when your average person takes their multivitamins and their vitamin Cs and everything every day you know just it just is what it is anyway enough of this I think um I I think we don't need to um keep beating this point you know I've seen a few people who who have this thing against supplements and all this stuff and I'm not a big fan of supplements myself you know I'm not you know I just take the B twelve spray one could argue that my clean machine protein I think I got that up in my browser here one could argue that this stuff is a supplement but it's really just a whole food plant that's been ground down and they even added the thing now that the it does and always has contained B twelve approximately twenty percent of your daily value so if you're afraid to take a B twelve supplement on better world you could try taking some clean green protein in fact if you use my coupon code happy vegan I think you get twenty percent off of this price here I know it's kind of expensive but twenty percent makes it a bit more affordable but I'm saying if this is a whole food plant the B twelve wasn't added it has has um omega threes it wasn't added so you don't have to worry about flaxseed being exotic food just take some of this stuff brah seriously um let me get back to here um simple easy handle yeah garden of life Emin yeah that's the B twelve spray in fact you know ever since I made that video um about Jeff Nelson I haven't even taken my B twelve spray I said I mean my levels are really high they're over a thousand and I know I'm getting B twelve from that um that clean machine that I just showed you that guy's there so why should I you know I'm just gonna I'm just gonna see what my blood on my my B twelve levels are next time I get a blood test and see if they've declined much maybe they you know there's enough in that clean machine to to keep it all going alright so what else you wish they sold our amount of the clean green protein yeah it is kind of expensive but you know I kind of make one of those tubs last a month the way I do it is on workout days I'll take a full scoop which is twenty grams of protein amongst other things just you know all the other nutrients and if I take have a full scoop after a workout and on um non-hard days non-workout days I'll have half a scoop so between that that using that method one of those tubs excuse me guys lasts approximately one month and once you plug in my discount you know it becomes a little bit more um affordable and I imagine if they can get more if it get more popular they can increase their um you know economies of scale efficiency costs and you know offer it for a more economical price because when you get down it's not that expensive to produce you know if they just need to scale it up Let's see. Yeah, good points. You guys are all raising good points there, yeah. Yeah, if you eat um, animals, you know, meat, whatever you, and you think you're getting B twelve from there, as we've seen, yeah, animals are supplement, they, they give B twelve supplements to animals. Chris Kresser had no idea, but yeah, James Wilk showed him the commercial products and Chris Kresser was forced to eat crow metaphorically. Blay, B twelve blaze it? Um, uh, I haven't heard that story. I heard they were trying to put a um, a, a center for the like containment of it out in Orange County, but I didn't know there were cases in Orange County. Um, hmm. Let's see, um. Are there many vegans, asked Johnny, who use the friendly medicine marijuana? Yeah, fully, yeah. I know many, many vegans. In fact, are, I don't want to say, I don't want to call anyone's names out or anything like that, but yeah, yeah, fully. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I, it's probably used in the same proportions, same percentages as the regular population uses it. Yeah, I mean, it's a plant. You know, it's, uh, it could be grown or veganically if you want to, and hopefully you're finding places that grow out like that. What I think of biodiesel as an alternative fuel source, given it uses animal bits? Um, well, I actually read about this because I was trying to use biodiesel um a long time ago when I got my first Mercedes diesel. Um, from the research I've done, it's pretty much um, plant oil, like soy, corn oil, stuff like that. Maybe there's some animal bits just incidentally mixed in, but it's, it's fueled by plants. In fact, that's how the original diesel engine was constructed by, there's actual Mr. Diesel. It was um, constructed so that would run off the crops in their fields. So um, so yeah, I'm, I'm sure there's some ways to make a, an animal-based biodiesel, I'm sure, but for, you know, that sounds like way more expensive. Most biodiesel I've seen out there comes from plant sources. That said, elec- electric cars are the way of the future. Biodiesel had its moment. And it still has a use as a transition fuel, not like fracking, like Amy Klobuchar and them say, but yeah. Um, yes, if it's plant-based, I'm down with it. Cool, thanks Timothy. We say we're a great holistic vegan channel for truth about nutrition and positivity and ethics. Thank you. That's one positive way to look at it. And cool, I'm glad we're your favorite channel. Awesome. Thanks for the vote of kindness and confidence there. Appreciate it. Let's see, um. Jamie, being ve- vegan may help you get into remission and get off a bunch of meds. That is cool. Let us know if that's working out for you. Um. Oh, what does my shirt say? Undercarved is the last word here. It's an old shirt I got from um, Sweet Simple Vegan, friend of ours. Let's see. What else you guys talking about here? Um, Better You Better World, yeah, we're, we've, we've belabored your point for quite a while. I think we gave it more time and attention than it really deserved. It was entertaining for a while, but yeah, we're gonna move on. So um, you know, yeah, no need to ask your, your questions there. I appreciate you linking to those studies. I have one in my browser, so I'll definitely look at that first one that you put up earlier, the one that had like the thirteen vegans or whatever. I will check that out and read through it. And um, if it's interesting enough, maybe I'll make a video about it. I think Race Lever has the second link too. But um, yeah, cool. Yeah, we're gonna move on from that whole selenium iodine deficiency that no one seems to have thing, at least as far as vegans go. So we're gonna move on. Yeah, shared vehicles are, are, are part of the future too, absolutely. You know, we just need to move towards a cleaner future and more, the more we see, or I guess the less we see of, of, you know, one person, poor vehicle, the better it's gonna be and if preferably more of these vehicles with alternative fuels. All right, cool. Guys, I see, I see some nice tips there you guys are giving about vegan dogs. Cool. I think I've heard of V-dog, not sure. Let's see, um. Yeah, we're done, Better You Better World. We're done with that whole topic, bro. So um, let's just move on to something else here. Cause I, I'm not gonna stay too much longer. I'm getting really hungry too. So we gotta figure out when, how dinner's gonna happen here. Yeah, Dawn, I still have, um, if anyone lives in Southern California, I have, um, I have my, um, my first, I had two um, Mercedes diesels for a while. Had the, the um, sedan and the wagon, the, the three hundred TD wagon I sold a few years ago. You guys may have seen the video about when it broke down, I fixed it up and sold it. And then um, I still have the three hundred D wagons, like from nineteen eighty-one, but a hundred twenty-nine thousand miles on it. So if anyone lives in SoCal and wants to have a pretty nicely kept, it's always been garaged his whole life, have all the service records, message me and we can talk about it. If anyone's into Mercedes, um, old Mercedes, it was um, purchased by a company, or it's a company, it's my friend JD, JG, um, Mercedes Motoring. What they do is they find these low mileage old um, Mercedes and fix them up and sell them for like thirty thousand bucks to people like Seinfeld and stuff like that. But so it's one of his cars before he got famous. So if anyone is interested, again, message me off our website and we could talk, cause I will, after the election is over, I will, you know, take some time out to sell that car, because it's just really not being used all that much anymore. But yeah, I guess um, easier if you live in Southern California, so we can like, you know, check it out, you can check it out. Yeah, butter wall, I didn't, I was trying to find my metal can of water. I think I left it outside in the car in the garage or something. Chris Paul says he can dunk because of veganism. Really? Did he say that? I will have to check that out. Um. It's funny, did he go plant-based or vegan? Cause last time I heard, um, I think John Sally was like bagging on, what a horrible diet that Chris Paul was eating. So um, I thought I've heard some rumors of new um, NBA, or not new, but you know, some prior, older NBA, NBA players moving on to plant-based vegan diet. So I gotta check that out about Chris Paul. So yeah, yeah, give me some more info about that. He did say that, cool. Who knows? I mean, well, I know what Chris is probably talking about. He's an older athlete, older in the NBA sense of older. And he probably felt the immediate relief that comes from eating a diet that's not pro-inflammatory, a diet that helps with recovery. He probably got a little, and probably lost a little bit of weight too, you know, so he probably got a little extra spring in his step. So I'm not surprised. Yeah, I remember on, on the All-Star game, I saw an alley-oop to Chris Paul. Usually there's alley-oops from Chris Paul, but someone threw him an alley-oop, I forgot who. Yeah, I go, wow, Chris Paul can dunk now? Wow. Thanks Ray, I hope I win too, but I think this election is um out of hand as far as spending goes and the corruption and scandal involved. Um. I think it's completely out of my hands. So much money has been put into this election. Contributions, special um, special interest contributions. So I don't know, we'll see how it goes down. I once, you know, once I saw how it really works, I was going, oh man, I wasn't prepared for, for how, how, how hardcore this is gonna get. Let's see, um, Shanny, don't, don't worry about anything like that. The most important thing is to make sure your animal's healthy. So um, do what you gotta do for yourself and yeah, do your research as far as what you feel most comfortable with, with feeding your, your new kitty there. Do I DJ? Not anymore. I used to a little bit in the nineties. Race Lever's been writing my campaign slogans for me, by the way, you know, he's got a, he's got a knack for it, I've noticed. Craig, I know you've said that how many times, huh? But it seems to not register, huh? So I don't know, you can say, yeah, eat potatoes, eat wheat, but I'm not sure if that's gonna really um, really do it. Yeah, Ray, it's, it's rough, man. I told you, like, um, Cindy Allen, the person I made that video about, yeah, I heard she raised over like eighty thousand, maybe a hundred thousand on her own and then got another hundred twenty thousand from special interests. I mean, not money that she received directly, but indirectly through independent expenditures, which is a wo- workaround, uh, campaign finance limit. It's really shady and it shouldn't be done, but that's what drives politics on the local and national levels too. So it's hard to run against two hundred thousand dollars compared to like my three thousand dollars, really, really hard, no matter how great my ideas might be, you know? So I've learned a lot and if I do it again in twenty twenty-four, I know what needs to be done, you know, I, I learn, I learn things quickly. But it's hard to know these things right from the beginning. It's such a complicated game and it really was like the most complicated video game imaginable. Let's see, um. All right, guys, I should really get going, man. This was, yeah, two, almost two and a half hours, guys. So I really should get going. Dinner needs to be handled. Um, but let's see, anything I want to tell you? Got a video coming out tomorrow morning, check it out. It's a, a, a YouTuber who embarked on a, a challenge to eat twelve eggs a day. He just didn't eat only eggs, he ate other stuff too. He wasn't vegan, obviously, but yeah, twelve eggs a day. And he had to call off this challenge abruptly, cut it short because of, his health was, was not doing well. So check that out tomorrow. It's a really interesting video. Back to the, you know, the health and vegan topics. So check that out. And then the next day, you Angie animal fans should be rewarded, probably on Friday with an animal Angie animal video. If it's not out Friday, it'll be out Saturday. One of the two, one of Angie's animals special friends video where we had one day when animals were just coming here like crazy, we just couldn't, non-stop, all day. And the night crew, the nocturnal animals came out, it was just nuts. So she filmed that. So hopefully you guys will get a kick out of that. I know there's a lot of people out there that particularly enjoy the animal Angie and special friend videos. So check that out. So um, yeah, I don't think we have any special announcements besides those two videos. So just make sure you're subscribed and hit that notification bell. A lot of people said there's got un- notified, unchecked or whatever. So click that so you know when all our stuff's going down. And you guys have been really cool. Thanks to Race Lover and Tracy who's left us for um, you know, running a tight ship here, keeping everything smooth, sailing for just a pleasant discussion with you guys. You know, that's what makes me stay on so long with you guys, because it's so chill. Everything's working and, you know, I enjoy it. Hopefully you guys enjoy it too. So thanks for staying with me here tonight. And next live stream, I'm not sure when that'll be. Next week could be kind of crazy with my election on March third. Um, go to Ryanlum.net if you want to read more about what I'm into. Watch my last video about the corruption in my campaign. It's really, really crazy. You'll never believe it if you haven't seen it, it's just so nuts. And um, let's see, and then I think Natural Products Expo is next week as well, in the latter part of the week. So it's gonna be a crazy week. So I'm not sure how many live streams will be. Hopefully I'll be able to sneak one in, but I'm not so sure. But anyway, thanks guys so much. Appreciate y'all, your support and love and good vibes. And I will try to return that with more videos to you guys. So thanks so much. Peace out.